We have
Recording has started.
Sorry, we have four. Okay. All right. You can start.
We're recording.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm School Committee Chair Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask my colleagues to unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Dr. Alkins. Mr. Cardette Hernandez. Ms. Lopera.
Present.
Ms. Mercer.
Present.
Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Present.
Mr. Tran. Mr. O'Neil. Ms. Robinson.
Present.
Thank you, Chair. We do have a quorum. We have three members absent at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion for the School Committee to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of conducting a strategy session related to the collective bargaining with the Boston Teachers Union and to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with the Superintendent of Schools, non-school personnel. To have this discussion in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the committee's bargaining position. The committee will return to public session at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins.
Yes.
Mr. Cardette Hernandez. Ms. Lopera.
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran. Mr. O'Neil. Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I'll ask my fellow members, the Superintendent, and staff to log off from this public session and join the executive session using the Zoom link sent out by Ms. Sullivan. We'll see you in a moment. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. The committee just returned from the executive session for the purpose of conducting a strategy session related to collective bargaining with the Boston Teachers Union as well as preparation for negotiations with the non-union personnel of the Superintendent of Schools. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the School Committee's webpage and on YouTube. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the February 15th meeting link. The agenda, presentations, and equity impact statements have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Verdeano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. After the interpreters finish introducing themselves and providing Zoom instructions, we will activate the interpretation icon, the globe, at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon to select your language preference. Will our Spanish interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Espanol?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone, distinguished schools committee members. My name is Juan Bernal. I am one of the Spanish interpreters assigned for this meeting today. Para accesar el servicio de interpretación, muy buenas noches para todos. Bienvenidos, por favor, localicen el globo redondo que aparece en la parte inferior derecha de sus pantallas. Hagan un clic sobre el globo y seleccione español como su idioma de preferencia para escuchar nuestra interpretación simultánea. De igual manera, aquellas personas que se estén conectando de un teléfono celular o de un iPad o de un iPhone, busquen los tres puntos que aparecen en la parte superior de sus pantallas y seleccione español como su idioma de preferencia donde dice Language Interpretation. Bienvenidos, muchas gracias. Thank you very much. The next interpreter may proceed.
Thank you. Will our Haitian Creole interpreter please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Haitian Creole?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Santillar, Haitian Creole interpreter. Ah, nous prend plaisir encore après midi pour nous traduire ses choses à propos. C'est moi-même avec Nadez qui a bâti sur l'interprétation. S'il vous en est nécessaire, cliquez sur le globe bleu qui est en bas. Ou appuyez sur le bouton. Et n'oubliez pas, si vous avez besoin d'une idée, nous nous sommes déjà remerciés. Merci beaucoup. Thank you.
Thank you. Will our Cabo Verdeano interpreter please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cabo Verdeano?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Armando Montero. I'm going to be your Cabo Verdeano interpreter. Buenoite, mi nombre es Armando Montero. Mi colega José nos ha enseñado a interpretar el Cabo Verdeano. Para que ustedes accedan a nuestro canal, ustedes también en esa parte inferior del computador donde hay un globo. Usted hace un clic en ese globo y es la opción de escoger la lengua y escoger la lengua de su preferencia. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Will our Cantonese interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cantonese?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Terry and I will be a Cantonese interpreter for the meeting tonight. 多謝大家，一陣間見。Thank you so much.
Thank you. Will our Mandarin interpreter please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Mandarin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Tina and I will be your Chinese Mandarin interpreters for the meeting. Okay, back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Will our Vietnamese interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Vietnamese?
Good evening, everyone. My name is V. Jeanne and I will be your Vietnamese interpreter for tonight's meeting. 謝謝很多。Thank you.
Thank you. Will our American Sign Language interpreters please introduce yourselves?
Well, we have a team of three interpreters, Yolanta, Lou, and Sharon. We're going to be in the main room. So you won't need to do anything other than just stay tuned. When the slides are up, you will see the interpreter spotlight. But other than that, you can stay in gallery or you can pin us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for assisting us this evening, and thank you to all of the BPS staff behind the scenes who also provide support for our virtual meetings to run smoothly. We will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for both public comment periods closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure you were signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that the committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes to a time to call on you. Again, thank you for your cooperation. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I want to make one adjustment to tonight's agenda. A little over an hour ago, the Massachusetts Appeals Court issued a decision extending its previous order to stay the city's vaccine mandate. We have decided to table tonight's vote on the memorandum of agreement with the Boston Teachers Union in order to allow for the legal advisor and the corporation counselor to review the decision and its impact on a vote by the School Committee on the proposed memorandum of agreement with the Boston Teachers Union. So moving on, tonight, we are proud to honor seventeen very talented and dedicated teachers who have earned or renewed National Board of Certification. National Board Certified Teachers are highly accomplished educators who meet high and rigorous standards. I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and for Teacher Leadership and Development, Shakira Ford Walker, to tell us a little more about the National Board program. Ms. Ford Walker?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening all. I am so excited to recognize and celebrate our National Board Certified Teachers today. As you said, it is a great accomplishment and an important statement about the high quality of your classroom practice. Our students in BPS are the real beneficiaries. I want to share just a little bit about our program and the work we are engaged in to recruit, support, and increase the number of National Board Certified Teachers in the Boston Public Schools. The National Board was established as a profession's vehicle for defining and recognizing accomplished teaching. National Board standards are created by teachers for teachers, as is National Board certification, a voluntary process to certify teachers against those standards. The founding mission of the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards is to advance the quality of teaching and learning. Boston Public Schools and our partners in the Boston Teachers Union have partnered and established a joint program to support diverse educators to achieve the gold standard in teaching excellence and expanding the number of National Board Certified Teachers in BPS. The BTU BPS program is centered on elevating teaching and empowering teachers. We provide a variety of learning opportunities and individualized support to candidates pursuing their certification at no cost. These supports include informational meetings, foundational workshops, technical support with uploading components, and the opportunity to collaborate with NBCTs and other National Board candidates while completing their certification. These groups are led by amazing NBCTs in BPS and other teachers learn to analyze their practice, which ultimately results in deeper understanding and improved teaching. In order to advance our goal of increasing the number of NBCTs in BPS and provide accomplished teachers with a leadership role, we redesigned our candidate support model. This newly redesigned model has expanded our capacity to support candidates through a more distributed model that engages more current NBCTs in an effort to grow our ranks in BPS. The ultimate goal is to build a system that is aligned to this new process, build awareness about what supports are offered, enlarge our network, and grow the teaching profession to advance student learning and achievement. Next slide, please. We all know that no one person can do this alone. We are incredibly grateful and fortunate to have an amazing and dedicated team of teacher leaders who provide tremendous support to prospective candidates on their board certification journey. We currently have over fifty candidates pursuing in this round and are actively seeking more candidates for the 2021-22 and 2022-23 school year. I want to commend and thank the members of our National Board Leadership Team, our cohort leaders and readers for their tireless efforts to offer support around board certification, advance professional practice, and promote teacher leadership, all of which ultimately improve the quality of teaching and learning in our schools. Thank you, team. For more information or questions about our program, please feel free to email us at nationalboard@bostonpublicschools.org. I'm now going to turn it back over to Chair Robinson, who will proceed with our recognition ceremony. Madam Chair?
Right. So sorry that I was muted. Again, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Ford Walker, for that helpful overview. I'm delighted that Eric Berg, Vice President of the Boston Teachers Union, is here with us tonight for this special recognition. Mr. Berg, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, I would love to. I'm also joined tonight by the BTU's Director of Professional Learning, Paul Tritter. And just want to say tremendous congratulations to all of these terrific educators who have worked so hard on this accomplishment. And it's been a really great partnership between the BTU and the BPS in supporting, recruiting these teachers to pursue National Board Certification. And in fact, my own certificate from the School Committee when I earned my National Board Certification is on the wall behind me. It still was a really incredible professional development experience for me. And just want to say thank you and congratulations to all the educators, but in particular, I have to give a special shout out to Kwaisia Clark, who earned her National Board Certification recently for the first time, who was a BTR resident in my classroom probably seven or eight years ago. Paul?
Oh, just congratulations to everyone and special shout out to Suzanne, Kelly, Margaret, Benedette, and Christina, our National Board Leadership Team, who really have built amazing supports across the district. We have fifty-plus folks in the pipeline working now, and it's just exciting to see this program growing in collaboration with Boston Public Schools.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you both. I will now introduce our teachers. When I call your name, please turn on your camera. Edwin Sebrion, Mozart Elementary School, Exceptional Needs Specialist, Early Childhood through Young Adulthood. Sinta Sebrion, Henderson K-12 Inclusion School, English Language Arts/Adolescence in Young Adulthood. Kwaisia Clark, Gru Elementary School, Generalist, Early Childhood. Hannah Erickson, Boston Day and Evening Academy, Science, Adolescence in Young Adulthood. Emmanuel Fairley-Pitman, Gru Elementary School, Generalist, Middle Childhood. Priscilla Lau, Boston Latin Academy, Science, Adolescent in Young Adulthood. Jessie Southwick, Boston Latin School, Science, Adolescent in Young Adulthood. Bridget Driscoll, Wrighton High School, English as New Language, Early Adolescent through Young Adulthood. Mary Jakes, Edison K-8 School, Exceptional Needs Specialist, Early Childhood through Young Adulthood. Matthew Zalouskis, John D. O'Brien School, Social Studies, History, Adolescence in Young Adulthood. Amanda Minerva, Mary Lyon K-8, Exceptional Needs, Early Childhood through Young Adulthood. Erin Osawiki, Boston Latin School, Science, Adolescent in Young Adulthood. Carla Zies, Edison K-8 School, Mathematics and Early Lessons, Adolescence, sorry. And Deborah Wise, Mozart Elementary School, English as a New Language, Early Childhood, Middle Childhood. Congratulations to all of you. We also have three teachers who are unable to join us tonight, but we want to be sure to recognize them. Nicole De Silva, Boston International High School, English as New Language, Early Adolescence through Young Adulthood. Ryan Lesler, Boston Latin Academy, English Language Arts, Adolescence in Young Adulthood. And Sylvia Gonzalez-Powers, Roosevelt K-8 School, English as a New Language, Early Childhood and Middle Childhood. We have citations and pins that we will mail out to all of our board certified teachers. Congratulations again, and thank you for raising the level of excellence in these schools. We will now move on to the approval of minutes. And at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the February 2nd, 2022 School Committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins.
Yes.
Mr. Cardette Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Lopera.
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran. Mr. O'Neil.
Yes, and profound thanks and congratulations to our National Board Certified Teachers.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to the Superintendent's report. I present to you our Superintendent, Dr. Brenda Casellius.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for joining us tonight. Congratulations again to all of our amazing teachers who have received their National Board certifications. The National Board Certification is the highest certification a teacher can obtain in addition to being one of the most respected recognitions across the nation. Every student deserves to be taught by a caring and competent teacher. And the educators honor, just a few minutes ago, exemplify the BPS mission to provide an excellent and equitable education to all of our students. Thank you for your dedication and for your service to the district, but more importantly, to our young people. Many thanks to Ms. Ford Walker and Mr. Tritter for their dedication to teacher excellence and their work to expand the NBCT support to our teachers. I have a full report this evening, so I'm going to get right into it. Last Monday, as you know, I announced that I would be transitioning from my role as Superintendent at the end of this school year. And I'm so filled with gratitude as I reflect on the many successes and improvements, you know, and bumps and wonderful highs and lows of progress that we've made together. As I stated in my letter to families last week, I am committed to Boston and our BPS students and families as the day I was when I arrived here in Boston. It's been a tremendous honor to serve the children of Boston, and I will continue to do so for the remainder of this school year. I'm committed to a strong and successful end of the school year and a smooth transition to the next amazing leader who will lead this organization. The priorities you've set for me these past few years and the promises I made to you are still priorities I hold close. And although we may not have gotten to every single one of those on our to-do list, we laid a strong foundation moving forward. And you can read more about some of the major work that we've been able to accomplish together Unfortunately, I now need to let you know of some really sad news. Former Boston School Committee President, Mrs. Jeanne Sullivan McKeegh, passed away after suffering from a long-term illness. Jeanne Sullivan McKeegh served on the Boston School Committee from 1980 to 1984 as Vice President in 1981 and President in 1992. During her tenure, she negotiated with thirteen unions, worked with community organizations to promote private and public collaboration with the public schools, initiated a number of reforms and reorganizations, worked with state legislators and local community leaders in every neighborhood, and chaired the Superintendent Search Committee that recommended the hiring of Dr. Robert Spillane. Mrs. McKeegh has been a member of a number of civic boards and committees in the metro Boston area and served as a teacher in the Chicago Public Schools. She blazed a trail for women earning her master's degree from Columbia in Management in the 1970s with a focus on corporate and strategic planning, organizational development, and intergovernmental and community relations during a fellowship at MIT Sloan School of Management. I'd like to extend my sincerest condolences to the family of Mrs. McKeegh and especially to her daughter, Principal Joanna McKeegh Cruz of Samuel Adams Elementary School in East Boston. My heart is with you during this difficult time. It is also with a heavy heart that we announced the passing of our central office colleague and friend, John Harris. John had been a member of the IT department since 1984 and recently retired to spend time with his wife and children in Marshfield. Often referred to as Johnny by his friends and family, he was born and raised in West Roxbury and was a graduate of Catholic Memorial High School. John attended Northeastern University and then went on to work in IT for us here at Boston Public Schools for nearly forty years. He enjoyed fishing with his brothers as well as going to the beach any chance he could get. He also enjoyed spending time in Florida and taking care of his garden every summer. According to our Chief Information Officer, Mark Racine, John had a million stories from back in the day, and some of the best could never be repeated. My condolences to John's wife, family, and friends, and to the members of the Office of IT who worked with him over the past forty years. I will now move on to the highlights portion of my report. Really excited that two labor unions representing electricians donated a brand-new van filled with $10,000 worth of new electrical equipment to Madison Park Technical Vocational High School last week. The IBEW Local 103 in Boston donated the van, decorated with a professional wrap in the school's colors, embossed with the words Madison Park Electrical Department on the side of the van. The New England Contractors Association of Greater Boston donated the equipment, including power tools, hard hats, PPE, and branded merchandise that filled the van. Contractor McDonald Electric also helped coordinate the donation initiative, transferring the van title from IBEW Local 103 to Madison Park. IBEW Local 103 and NECA are valued partners of the high school who offer many technical and vocational opportunities to the students and graduates of Madison Park. Thank you, IBEW Local 103 and NECA, for all you've done for our students and continue above and beyond the call of duty to exemplify a true partnership with Madison Park. I'll now move on to district man updates. As we shared previously at the School Committee, the district is making critical investments in literacy and safe and welcoming school environments by dramatically expanding library access through ESR. This Sunday, the Boston Globe ran an article about the need for further investments. I wanted to just take a moment to both reaffirm our commitment to this quality guarantee and to provide a couple of points of clarification. The Globe stated that the current ratio of certified librarians to students is 1 to 6,700, when it's actually 1 to 2,300. When we include our libraries that are supported by our library paraprofessionals, the ratio becomes 1 to 1,000, which is in line with the state averages of one librarian for every 1,450 students. In addition, we are proposing an additional 33.5 positions across thirty-seven school libraries as part of a multi-year district initiative, which will create a ratio of one librarian for every 530 projected students across the impacted schools. As well, it is important to connect this investment to our broader investments and district-wide focus on equitable literacy. Expanded access to libraries is not taking the place of literacy interventions, but is parallel to them. We are making critical investments in reading interventionalists in our schools that need them and access to rules-based reading support in every school as well. I'm excited that over the course of the next three years, we will reach our goals of having libraries in every school or access close to a BPL library where they can get their imaginations full and the support that they need for their reading. It's important to me to be clear about these investments and that we are making and to highlight the incredible work of our library staff across the district and getting it done for our kids. I want to give a couple of updates on our COVID testing regimen and our response. After much deliberation and consultation with students and families, staff, and public health experts, BPS will adopt an adjusted approach to COVID-19 testing in schools. This new policy will take effect on March 7th, 2022. In partnership with CIC Health and with DESI, each BPS student and staff member will have access to at-home rapid antigen tests weekly, and we will continue with our weekly pool testing. We will also continue to offer testing for symptomatic individuals as needed during the school day. This new approach will provide This new approach will provide more access to COVID testing and replace the process associated with the test-and-stay protocol as it currently stands, especially considering the very modest yield in terms of identifying positives. As recommended by DESI, we will discontinue the test-and-stay and individualize contact tracing associated with it. If there is a positive pool, we will still individually test all the students in that pool to determine who is positive. The difference is, instead of testing for five days in a row, also referred to as test-and-stay, we will ask students, staff, and families to monitor for symptoms, and they will have access to an additional rapid test to use at home. If a student develops or showing symptoms in school, they will be rapid tested in school. This change is aligned with the updated DESI testing program, which strongly recommends administering weekly at-home antigen testing and discontinuing contact tracing in test-and-stay. We will continue communicating with our school communities regarding COVID-19 positive cases in their respective communities. With once-a-week pool testing, symptomatic testing, and the wide weekly availability of at-home testing, we believe we will quickly learn who is positive for COVID-19. As we continue to learn and adapt through this pandemic, we have worked with our partners at Boston Public Health Commission to guide us in our work and to take measures that are responsive to public health trends in our city. We are communicating this update in a letter to families tomorrow after sharing it with school leaders, school nurses, and other staff. Before implementing this policy, we will host two community meetings on Monday, February 28 at 5:30 p.m. and Thursday, March 3 at 5:30 p.m. For more information and to register for these community meetings, please visit www.bostonpublicschools.org/covid-19. We have also been following the CDC guidance and state public health and education officials announcements that there can be safely be reduction in the minimum number of days a person is sick with COVID in which they have to isolate, and those who are exposed to COVID have to quarantine. After careful consideration and many conversations with Boston Public Health Commission, BPS has adopted these new protocols. In summary, a student confirmed as positive with COVID-19 must isolate for a minimum of seven days and may return on day eight only if they are free of symptoms and have the ability to wear a mask. Otherwise, they need to remain isolated for the full 10 days. If a student is exposed to COVID-19 either in school or out of school, they do not need to quarantine if they are vaccinated and can wear a mask when they are in school or at home and exposed to the positive individual. If a student is unvaccinated but can wear a mask, they need to quarantine for five days and return on day six as long as they do not develop symptoms. If a student is unvaccinated and cannot wear a mask, they will need to quarantine for 10 days. I know that's a lot. I read it quickly as well, and there are often questions that result from these kinds of changes. So the student testing process and quarantine and isolation updates will continue to be communicated frequently to our school leaders, our nurses, and our families and students. But for more details on this updated guidance, you can visit our website at bostonpublicschools.org/covid19. Again, these new policies will take effect on March 7, 2022, giving us time to share and update and answer questions. And of course, all of this will be translated for our families so that they can have the information that they need. In other news, last week Governor Baker announced the end of the Commonwealth's masking requirement in schools as of February 28. This means schools across the Commonwealth are now responsible for choosing whether or not to implement or eliminate their masking requirement. For now, after consultation with Mayor Wu and the Boston Public Health Commission, Boston Public Schools will maintain our current mask requirement for all students and staff while in our schools and traveling on our buses. Masking has been one of the most important aspects of our health and safety work in schools, and we will continue to require masks for all students and staff in BPS buildings and on school buses. We will monitor data and trends and communicate any changes to our masking policy in consultation with Boston Public Health Commission, our families, and staff. In the meantime, we have begun deliveries of new masks to schools, including KN95 masks for students and staff. There are 24,000 masks that have been delivered and are replenished as requested by schools through a defined PPE system in the district. There are more than 250,000 masks in stock. Additionally, BPS is making 300,000 N95 masks available. These are the same masks that are worn by our EMTs and other medical professionals. After consulting with the Boston Public Health Commission, anyone who chooses an N95 mask will receive information from the CDC to self-fit the masks. We are making N95 masks available to students 18 and over as well as staff. They can be requested at the school level. And finally, I will continue to stress how it is important, how important it is for you, everyone in your household, and your students to get the COVID-19 vaccine. This is the only way we can get some sense of normalcy back. You can call your student's doctor or visit the city of Boston or our BPS website at bostonpublicschools.org/vaccines for more information on the clinic's dates, times, and locations near you. As a reminder, next week from Monday, February 21 through Friday, February 25, is the BPS February break. There will be no classes for students and educators will not report to their schools. It has already been quite a difficult year, so I hope all school-based staff will lean into some rest and relaxation and that our students will enjoy their break away from school and participate in some of the enrichment activities BPS is providing. You can find free enrichment activities available to BPS students during February break on our website at www.bostonpublicschools.org/February. As a reminder, our facilities department has been creating school packages of rapid tests. These packages will ensure that each student and staff member across the district is able to take one kit home in advance of February break. Each kit contains two rapid tests. We ask that each student takes one of the rapid tests on Sunday prior to returning to their school building on Monday, February 28. We ask that if you receive a positive result, that you begin the quarantine and isolation process as previously mentioned and report the information to your school. Again, you can find updated isolation and quarantine guidance Also occurring during February break will be our Acceleration Academies. Acceleration Academies are week-long academic programs that take place outside of the traditional academic school year and provide additional instructional time in ELA-focused key ideas and details with informational text in February and math-focused specific domains associated with major works of the grade in April over school vacation. The academies are designed to accelerate student learning in small academically rich settings by leveraging engaging, standards-aligned lessons. Lessons build toward a project, problem-based, performative task, which provides students an opportunity to integrate their learning, strengthen academic skills, and engage with complex texts and tasks. The academies can provide students with targeted support to master grade-level standards and further accelerate advanced learners. The BPS will focus on the needs of our multilingual learners and our students with disabilities and students who are duly identified. Speaking of enrichment opportunities, registration for our summer programming will begin in mid-March. Please keep your eyes peeled as we will begin providing more updates throughout the next month and as registration begins. Last summer, we had a record number of opportunities available for our students, and we are hoping to engage even more students with enrichment activities, summer learning, and employment opportunities this summer. Just give a quick update on registration. The priority registration period for 2022-23 school year for students entering grades 2, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 8, 10, 11, and 12 has started and will close on April 1. Families will be notified of their assignments by the end of May. The priority registration round for K0, 1, K1, 6, Grade 6, Grade 7, and 9 has closed. Most students in this round will receive assignments at the end of March, with the exception of Grade 7 students who are notified in May, which allows the district to first remove students assigned to exam school seats, increasing students' access to their school choices. Please know that families can still register for these grades through a welcome center and will be included in the next assignment round. I am really happy to report to you that the Welcome Services team has gotten 100% of the school choice forms back from our Trotter and King Rising Grade 7 students who are transitioning this year. I want to thank them for their quick action and for their incredible service to these students and their families. For our families still researching options, we really encourage you to visit discoverbps.org, our school search engine that helps parents review options, search by special features, and even rank choices. You can visit Discover BPS by going to www rediscoverbps.org. Or you can email welcomeservices@bostonpublicschools.org with any questions you might have. And last, but certainly not least, I want to honor our BPS Chief of Staff, Mary Dillman, who will be departing from her post after February break. I first shared this news with my staff in January with mixed emotions. I'm primarily filled with heartfelt gratitude, but a little bit of sadness as Mary has been a true champion and an amazing partner to me. When Mary first agreed to serve as Chief of Staff, she committed to 18 months of service in that role, and we have gone well past that timeframe. In this critical leadership role, Mary has been a trusted advisor and thought partner and a steadfast champion for our children. Mary's been a key guide as we transitioned through the different phases of the pandemic and navigated several pivots to remote and hybrid instruction. As Chief of Staff, Mary helped bring additional structure to our central office. She introduced new frameworks for planning and collaboration and new systems for internal documentation and decision-making. She has championed the creation of working conditions that demonstrate respect for employees and increase our ability to recruit and retain talented staff members, including most recently developing a pilot flexible work policy in collaboration with leaders within the organization. During her tenure, our district enacted multiple major policy changes aimed at addressing systemic barriers to educational equity, including groundbreaking changes to exam school admissions and the adoption of the MasCor Common graduation requirements. Prior to her time as Chief of Staff, Mary worked at BPS in several positions, including serving as Executive Director of the Office of Data and Accountability and founder of the BPS Data Inquiry Team. In these roles, Mary developed strong teams that cultivated effective coaching, assessment, research, and analytic tools designed to help educators understand students' learning and how we can best support them. I have no doubt the contributions she has made to BPS are going to last well beyond her time in our district. As Mary prepares for her next professional adventure and some well-deserved family time, please join me in thanking her for her nearly 12 years of invaluable service to Boston Public Schools. Following Mary's tenure, I'm going to rely on Deputy DePina, Deputy Eccleston, and Chief of Schools Cory Harris to act as a team of support. They've been amazing leaders during the past several months, and I look forward to continuing our important work alongside them and the entire executive team together. Mary, I wish you a lifetime of success, happiness, and excellence. And that's my superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. I'd like to remind my colleagues about our agreed upon norm that we each have five minutes. That's one to two questions. And I would like to remind BPS staff to also be brief in your response. If you have additional questions, I'll come back and do a second round. And if you have a question, please raise your virtual hand. Put the request in the chat. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Thank you, Superintendent, for your report. And I know I said this at our last budget meeting, but I want to say it again. I'm excited about our partnership over the next five months. I'm incredibly thankful for your service in one of the most difficult times we've seen in public education in the history of our country. As we've, under your leadership, we're able to manage through the height of the pandemic. So thank you for your service, and we're all wishing you good luck in your future endeavors. But we know your foot is still on the gas as we take on the rest of the school year. I'm curious from your update, and you may have to get back to me on this, but I'm wondering if we're seeing any enrollment trends as we're entering registration season. And we've seen sort of the priority application window open for our earliest grades. And if there's anything of note that you are ready to share with us as we think about the future, but also as we're starting to engage in the budget process.
So I think Acting Chief of Family Engagement Denise Snyder is on the call. If she would pop on really quick and see if there's any early trends that you can share with us, and we certainly can get you a more thorough assessment. But maybe just what are you seeing, Denise?
Sure. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. We have not begun to dig into the analysis. We do have a tracker, and we will start to look more carefully at that in the coming two weeks. So I'm happy to come back and report to folks. I think currently we have been much more focused on who are the outstanding applications, who have not returned them, who should return them, particularly for Grade 7. There were a few dozen, maybe actually, I think probably close to 70 applications that had not been returned at Grade 7 across the district from students who have to transition. We reported Trotter and King's success, which was great. But our focus really has been following up with those families to make sure that they can get in the round and participate. So that's what's happening now. And like I said, I'd be happy to come back and talk about what we're seeing in the tracker and some of those trends.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I think it would be good for all of us and for our families also to just know sort of what you're seeing as we go through the enrollment season. So thank you.
Sure, of course.
Thank you. Ms. Lopera?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Superintendent and team, for the informative report. Always appreciate getting the updates and also seeing how it translates on the ground as a parent in the district. So thank you for that. I did have a couple of questions as it relates to the upcoming February Acceleration Academies as well as April. I'm wondering if all of the schools were providing Acceleration Academies and if they weren't more around what schools or kind of what was the expectation around that? And also getting a better understanding of the number of students that are being served both in February as well as April.
Great. Thank you for that question, Ms. Lopera. I'm going to call on Dr. Eccleston to give a little bit of an update about Acceleration Academies if you want to go a little bit deeper in that, Dr. Eccleston.
I will do my best. So we offered opportunities for all schools in the BPS to take on an Acceleration Academy. They were fully funded and supported with resources for the number of teachers, a site coordinator, school nurse, et cetera. About 67 schools agreed to participate in an Acceleration Academy for February. The questions, the essential question for all grades across Grades 3 to 12 focused on what would it take What would it take to make Boston sort of a richer, more inclusive city? And specifically focused on topics such as in third grade, they're focusing on monuments in the city of Boston. Who gets honored, who's not honored in the city, and they'll make policy recommendations. To Mayor Wu about changes that should happen based on monuments, and each each grade level is taking on a different problem. Reading complex grade level texts that are both sort of engaging and enabling text. To support students to make those policy recommendations. And it builds toward a work where they are actually simulating that they are a member of Mayor Wu's cabinet. And will be making sort of those policy recommendations. Of the roughly four thousand three hundred students that will be participating. Over sixty percent of them identify as a multilingual learner, a student with disability, or an L with disability. So we're really making sure that we prioritize the the students who needed this time the most. And making sure that there was sort of rich and authentic, inspiring, ambitious opportunities for students to engage in content. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head for April vacation. There are more schools and more students for April vacation, but I just don't have that on the top of my head and. Would be excited to sort of provide a more thorough update at the next meeting on the April Acceleration Academy.
Thank you so much for that. I highly appreciate just that information, the work that's that's going into that, also knowing that it's. It's been a taxing years for educators too, but many of them are stepping into into this role and. Supporting students with these needs. Just to follow up around. The schools that are providing it. For enrollment purposes for an Acceleration Academy, was it available to? Any student and family who wanted to participate, or were students targeted? Just kind of what was the enrollment and recruitment and communication process between schools and families?
Yeah, that was all done at the individual site level. There was really clear criteria that that was provided to schools around the need to prioritize. Ensuring that multilingual learners, students with disabilities had first access to the programming. We tried to be really clear and explicit on that and set some targets for schools. But other than that, it was up to the individual schools to make decisions, and we did ask. That for every classroom, we kind of were shooting for. An average of fifteen to seventeen students, but that we would really want to make sure that we invited twenty-five to twenty-seven students to fill that, knowing that there would be some. Families who would not want to participate for whatever reason. So that's sort of how we approached. Both the February and the April enrollment, and then there were some schools who said like. Hey, listen, the structure of February vacation doesn't work. We want to use funds. To have Saturday programs or do these different sort of approaches to things. And we provided resources to those schools, so they're not. They're not doing it in Acceleration Academy, but they're using those resources to to approach. Some additional learning opportunities for students that work that work better for their community in that way.
That's great, and that's also really helpful. I know I'm out of time, but would love to see the list of where. Those Acceleration Academies are, like what school communities are doing that, and what school communities are doing. An adapted version, and then I'm just going to sneak one other piece in here is. Is it a full day of academy and is there transportation available? And then I'm I'm done.
Transportation is available, fresh meals are available. Schools were strongly encouraged to partner with CBOs and other partners to extend the day. But it is, I don't remember the exact hours, but it's generally the school day. And we wanted to make sure that families who might need after-school care or before school care. And that those opportunities were available potentially through a CBO, and we. Made sure that that school leaders knew that we were available. If they wanted a thought partner on a CBO. Who might be able to step up to the plate to support that work. And would gladly get you the list of schools by tomorrow.
Thank you. Dr. Alkins.
Could you just give a small update on? Do you find that families prefer? One particular week over the others in terms of taking advantage of the Acceleration Academies? And in that sense, also, when does the registration typically open for each of those?
Yeah, I apologize. My memory is a little foggy. It's been a rough few months with everything that we're dealing with. So I can't remember exactly when we started this process, but we we locked into the routes for buses. Months ago, and so we tried to sort of. Plan for this multiple months in advance and communicate to families. Well before they had to potentially make decisions around what they might do over those breaks. It it, and I I'll have to sort of look to see what the if this was a student or a sort of staff. But there's a lot more interest in April than there was in February, and I don't know if it was just people's exhaustion. But it, my guess is that maybe that that was when staff might be more available. And principals and school leaders felt like that they could actually staff that, but we're still in February serving well over four thousand students.
Thank you. Mr. Cardad Hernandez.
This wasn't in the update, but I want to just make sure we're circling back. And I know you might not have an update tonight, but definitely for a future meeting, just want to know where we are in thinking about the. The questions we asked in the the last meeting around the graduation numbers. And the rollout of some of those new. Reforms that we were thinking. About in order to maintain quality. So I just want to throw it out there. It's not necessarily a question unless you have an update, but I want to make sure it sort of. Exists in the conversation, as I know folks remain interested, including myself.
Yeah, thanks for that. The team continues to look at. Ways in which to address the paperwork. And so we can certainly come back around when we have all of the final controls in place for. And more information to the school committee.
Other questions? Superintendent, I just have one with regard to the whole masking policy. Has throughout the year, has there been any assessment done around at what grade levels? We've had most issues around those, which ages of students have been most compliant? Around mask use and where there has been difficulty with mask use.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have not done a formal assessment, but I can tell you anecdotally, it is the lower grade levels that have had more. More difficulty, and then we have had more difficulty with some of our students who have. More complex disabilities who are unable to mask. And that is where we have had the highest number also of having to close classrooms. Because we that we haven't been able to. Enforce that because it, you know, these are students who have difficulty with it. So the early childhood grades where masking is much more challenging. The younger grades, I mean, really younger, it's like K zeros, K ones. Even a little bit in the kindergartens, but the students generally. For most of the grades have been very compliant with it. They recognize the importance and the reasons why behind masking. And there hasn't been a lot of. Ranker that I've heard among the students, and maybe Ms. Mercer has. More information from the student's perspective about masking. But it's been mostly in the students with complex disabilities and inability to mask.
Thank you. Ms. Mercer, do you want to make any comments?
A quick comment, actually. So I basically agree with the superintendent. A lot of the students have been masking. There's always the occasional, hey, pull your mask, because someone might have drunk some water or juice and forgot to pull it back up, but. Everyone's been very like, oh, I need a new mask, or let me go get a new mask if anything happens, and we know exactly where to get it. So. The masking is doing quite well.
All right, thank you both very much. Any other comments before we move on? If there's no further discussion, I'd now like to entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LaPera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties. To make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time. But refer to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time. But may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have thirty-five speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak. And I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic. Are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair. And refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure that you're signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comment. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin with our students. Starting with. Karina Dyer. Rosalie Doom. Kaysha Gideon. Kwame Ellis. And Nikivia Hall. If you could, please raise your hands in Zoom. Karina?
Hi. I don't have no questions. But today I'm going to give a speech. And so, hi, my name is Karina. I'm a third grader at the P A Shaw School. I wanted to do this speak. Out for my school because I wanted to say that you should add a fourth grade of fifth grade and a sixth grade to the P A Shaw. Shaw. I don't want to lose my friends. I love everything that this school has to inspire me to do. At the P A Shaw, we love each other like we're family. Don't break our hearts by shrinking our school. It's unacceptable for us to not have a fourth grade, a fifth grade, and sixth grade. Because ever since second grade, we never have gotten to see each other in person. It was a difficult time for us. Now we're learning together in person. I think it is only fair that we should get do to do this longer, not less time. I think we deserve this because we are fighting for our right to have the education we want. Also, we're learning about Black Lives Matter. I learned a lot about young black people who are freedom fighters like us. We're fighting for something that we should already have. We don't want to leave this school. This school is amazing, just like us. The teachers are smart like us. They are nice like. They are nice. They are kind. I'm so delighted to be in this intelligent, brilliant school. If my parents didn't send me to this.
You're okay. Keep going.
What could have happened to me? Maybe I wouldn't know about started things by like math. And scientists who look like me. I'm determined to have a fourth grade, a fifth grade, and a sixth grade at the P A Shaw. Thank you for listening to my speech. Sincerely, Karina.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karina. Rosalie has not signed into the meeting, so we'll move on to Kaysha Gideon.
Hi, my name is Kaysha, and I am six years old. And in the first grade at the P A Shaw. When I started first grade, I did not know how to read. More than anything I wanted to learn. I worked hard at home, eh, at school, and I worked hard. At school. At home. My, my teachers and my family worked together to help me. Look at me now. I am reading. Reading. I love math too. I, I can do math all day long. Right now, I am learning how to add. Three numbers together. I am teaching my two-year-old sister how to do math and how to write her ABCs. I want her to go to the P A Shaw too, so she can have the best teachers like I do. Please do not shut down a third-grade classroom in our school. Make it a fourth grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kwamani Ellis.
Hi, my name is Kwame, and I am in first grade. I did not. Know the sounds of letters when I began first grade. I now I know them. And I am reading too. I was a marvelous mathematician before I began first grade. And I am learning more math at the P A Shaw. I did not know how to write stories before first grade. Now I write stories with detail. I learned all this because of perseverance. We talk about it every day. I even got an award. For showing perseverance because I never give up. I love my friends and I love my school. Now I am showing perseverance to keep my school from closing down. Don't shut our school down. We will never give up. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nikivia Hall.
Hello, my name is Nikivia Hall, and I'm the mother of Kwame Ellis, who just spoke. I'm a pro- I am proud of my son and his accomplishments. Kwame is very smart, and he is learning so much this year. The P A Shaw is like a family, a community that we will not want to lose. The staff work hard with our children, and they know what the families. And they know that if families. and they know that if families are not well, it is very hard for our children to do our best, to do their best. I have another son who attends the Jackson Man School. His school is closing this year as well. I do not want both of my sons to have the school experience disrupted. Schools closing makes it harder for them to learn. Please add a fourth, fifth, and sixth grade to the P A Shaw so Kwame can keep going to the, to the Shaw, and neither, neither of us will lose our connection with this excellent neighborhood school.
There's not possible for
And try to keep the Jackson Man open as well. Thank you.
It's not possible for a sixth grade though.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bridget Reyes Zaniga, followed by Felito Diaz.
Hi. Hi, my name is Bridget, and I am first grade at the P Shaw. I am six. I want to stay in this school. The school is perfect for me. And learning a lot. I do want, don't want, want the school to shut. I love my community. Please do not make it harder for me to learn.
Thank you, Bridget. Our next speaker is Felito Diaz.
Hi, um, hi, my name is Felito Diaz. Um, Bridget is that. I attended the Paul A. Dever School and John W. McCombe and graduated from Breton School. Bridget was born in Honduras. She started school in Chelsea, and now she at the P A Shaw. She is learning new words and improving her English every day. I don't want to be shipping my daughter from school to school. I want her to be at a school where she can keep the relationship she is building with other kids and with her teachers. When I was growing up, I didn't want to go to school. Bridget wants to go to school even on the weekends. My biggest worry when she started at the Shaw was that she wouldn't feel comfortable. I wanted my kid to be at a diverse school, and she is loving it. When I pick up Bridget at the end of the school day, I watch her hug her friends and say long goodbyes. Education be the, should be first priority. I want my daughter to stay at the P R Shaw School, sixth through sixth, sixth grade. Don't close a classroom at the Shaw. Keep it growing. I want this for Bridget and for all the kids that are at our school. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now invite our interpreters to support our next set of speakers. I'll turn off the interpretation icon. Interpreters and the public will all be in the main room. Interpreters, please stop interpreting and mute yourself for this part of the testimony. School committee member Ms. Polanco Garcia will receive Spanish interpretation by phone when the testimony is being presented in a language other than English or Spanish. Our next speaker is Karen Lahara.
Karen Lahara is the next person that is listening. Can you hear Karen? Karen Lahara is listening. Good night, Mrs. Lahara. Can you hear? Ask her if she can hear, but no replies. Can you turn on the microphone? Tell her to turn on the microphone. We cannot hear. Can you hear now, Mrs.? Is she listening? Ask her if she can hear, but we cannot hear her at all. She has turned off her microphone. Can you turn on?
Can you hear now?
Now we can hear. I'm going to interpret a few phrases. Pause for me to interpret. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good night to the Public School of Boston. Thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening, everyone. Boston Public Schools, thank you very much for the opportunity.
As a mother of two girls in the P A Shaws, I would like the public schools to extend the school up until sixth grade. Continue. If it's not possible for this year, for the sixth, at least fourth grade.
If that is not a possibility for the sixth grade, how about the fourth grade?
Um, I'm very grateful to this school for the sense of community, for the support. My two girls started virtual. It was a very big challenge for us.
We have to consider as well that my daughters, they did start taking a virtual education here, which was a big change for us. I am very grateful to the school for everything for their support. Continue.
I would like to see that the reason why I would like the girls to stay here until the sixth grade is because of all the support, how they're learning, how the teachers are involved in the education of our children. I think it would be a great loss. The major reasons I would like them to continue in that school up until the sixth grade
is because the support they're getting, the learning that is taking place, the way the teachers are supporting them, including the principals. So I do believe that it will be a big loss. A great loss. Continue.
It would be a great loss, not only for the children, but for the community, for the community that lives in Madison. We have to consider that they have an excellent support for them there. That's very important. Go ahead. And not only this, but I think the reason why most students aren't enrolled in the school is because their parents see that the school only goes from kindergarten one to the sixth grade. And then the sixth grade is the most important education for a child. It's the formation, the base of any school. If a child has to start over in a school, it's difficult to transfer to them.
We have to consider that perhaps the most important grade in a school would be the third grade. And that's one of the main reasons why the parents are a little bit skeptical in registering the kids into that school because they do know that only the school has from the K one up until third grade. Third grade is the perhaps the most important grade that there is. Continue.
So I would like to consider that, so extending the school and as a community, tell us what we can do in order to maintain the school in the third grade because I would like the children to continue to use the services they're getting from the third grade up until the sixth grade. So I would like to hear what are their suggestions for us as a community.
Twenty seconds.
Twenty seconds, Mrs. Can you continue? Twenty seconds.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you very much. Thank you very much for hearing us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lahara.
Uh, our next speaker, Luciano Barros Tapina, is not signed into the meeting. So, uh, I will now activate the interpretation icon, and all interpreters will be sent to your channels so you can begin interpreting again. Our next set of speakers is Robert Jenkins, followed by Edith Bazil, Adrian Lovell, David Jones, and Alyssa Hunter. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, I'm on. Good afternoon. Good evening, everyone. I'd just like a few words to say. Um, I was listening to what Drew Eckersley had to say around these acceleration academies. And I would like to let him know that, you know, there are a number of schools who can fit, especially the special ed and ELL population, like Madison Park and the Matter Hunt. Unfortunately, a community-based organization, uh, Boston Centers for Youth and Families have pulled out of a number of our school buildings, which leaves a big void on these facilities that could help enhance not, not only academically, but athletically and social, for social and emotional learning as well. Another thing I would like to put a point to is that Madison Park does not have a varsity football team. And that's a separate issue I would work with because, you know, kids need to have a source of enjoyment during high school, their high school years. And along with academics comes athletics. We have twelve hundred students in the school, which also leads me to a few other points I like to make that I made last week briefly. Is that at Madison Park with twelve hundred students, we need at least two family liaisons. If not a family liaison, also a CFC worker to work with that family liaison. When you want to engage parents, you have to make sure that we all have the necessary tools. And one of the things that Madison has been improving on since I've been a number of school site council member there has been our school site council, which our school site council works very well, parents, students, teachers, and, uh, students on the high school level. We also would like to request that, I think it's already been put in writing, if not, I'll make sure, is that changing the Madison Park start time to a later start time. We've looked at it. We had a survey go out, and there was a large percentage of the students and teachers and parents who agreed that a later start time might be able to curb the attendance issue at Madison. And just a few years ago, the Boston Public Schools wanted to change the start times. The reason why we want to bring it up now because it's during budget season, and we don't want our handy or our special ed students because we know transportation has to be changed somewhat. But that's something to look at down the line. And as I said, that Madison Park is a big building that has, along with O'Brien, along with O'Brien, it's a very big sporting complex that is not used right now for after-school programming or nor for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Our next speaker is Edith Bazil.
The Boston Public Schools wanted to change the start times. The reason why we want to bring it up now because it's during budget season, and we don't want our handy or our special ed students because we know transportation has to be changed somewhat. But that's something to look at down the line. And as I said, that Madison Park is a big building that has, along with O'Brien, it's a very big sporting complex that is not used right now for after-school programming or nor for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Our next speaker is Edith Bazil.
Good evening, and thank you very much. Schools are more than buildings or math formulas in a budget. Each of us remembers our schools, the friendships we shared, and the teachers who cared. Schools are nonaccidental communities, rather examples of hardworking teachers and school leaders. Here's a brief excerpt I wrote as a young teacher in nineteen ninety-four, inspired by educators who focus on the whole child. What is a school? A school is our history, owned by all and belonging to no one. It is our strength, our sanity, our key to unlocking wonders, our sanctity from society's frailties and woes. A school is timeless. We must use its time wisely. For this time is borrowed briefly, and time is of the essence since a school is our chance to get it right this time around. Our schools are pathways to roads we build, roads we must ultimately travel. So let's cultivate them with calculating compassion, foster a campaign of kindness, connect, capture, and celebrate creativity. Carve it with commitment, birth it with vision, and cherish it always with student-focused care. Madam Chair, in light of the school committee's glowing performance evaluations of Dr. Casilius and the extension of her contract just months ago, I am wondering if the school committee was blindsided by Dr. Casilius's sudden resignation, which will cost the taxpayers approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Despite strong differences with this administration's policies, I allege it's deja vu. Mayor Walsh abruptly ended Dr. Chang's superintendency with a similar pseudo-resignation costing taxpayers three hundred and, over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. One thing these two leaders had in common, they dared to address two sacred political calls of white privilege, Dr. Chang, AWC, and Dr. Casilius's historic equity-focused change to Boston Latin school admissions policy. Wu announced the search has already begun for a permanent, not interim superintendent by a fast-track July twenty-two deadline, which begs the question, what is, was this a campaign promise? We've seen this pattern before. What role would the school committee play? Where's the transparency and community engagement? We are watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adrian Lovell.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Adrian Lovell. I'm speaking on behalf of Boston Day and Evening Academy as an alternative competency-based school in Roxbury with a long legacy of serving students who haven't been served well by a traditional model. I am the program leader of BDA two point oh. We started BDA two point oh back in two thousand eighteen as a program designed to meet the social, emotional, educational, and postgraduate needs of our Black and Latino young men when our data indicated that these students were not progressing through our competency-based model at the same rates as their female peers. When BDA two point oh started, we were located at the Dearborn STEM School. The following school year, we moved to the Timolte Building, which is where we are still currently located. However, as you know, the Timolte Building is set to close at the end of this school year. Because it's already February, we're moving forward with the assumption that BDEA two point oh will remain in the Timolte Building. And we asked the committee to both confirm this and ensure that our students have all the resources they need to learn and thrive next year. This includes safety personnel, a school nurse, nutritious and nurturing food. And I'm asking and stating it, the district cannot move our BDA two point oh students again. BDA two point oh is currently in the heart of Roxbury, Nubian Square. It's close to our main building, which is right up the street at twenty Kirzar Jav, which we have outgrown. We're in walking distance of our partners like Roxbury Community College, Madison Park Development Corporation,
Second.
and Youth Build, which support our pathways, including student internships, dual enrollment opportunities, as well as other post-grad plans. BDEA was designed to serve students that have fallen through the cracks at other VPS schools. The BDA community should remain together, and we want, and I'm asking, sorry, I'm asking that VPS commit to a state-of-the-art alternative high school in the Timolte Complex, and that the district allow BDA two point oh to remain in the building until renovations are completed, when the entire BDA community can come together under one roof while remaining in the Nubian Square neighborhood that it's been located at for well over fifteen years. Thank you all for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Adrian. Our next speaker is David Jones, followed by Alyssa Hunter, John Daly, Eileen Carver, and Rosalina Piazza. If you could please raise your hands in Zoom. David? David, you're on mute.
Okay, here we go. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is David Jones of Dorchester. And I've been a teacher in Boston Public Schools since 2012. I'm currently a board member at Boston Day and Evening and a history teacher at 2.0. And I'm just going to echo a few of the things that my colleague Ms. Lovell just stated, which is that most recently, Boston launched a new city office and commission to ensure that Black men and boys have equitable access to opportunities in our city. We see our work at BDA as a fulfillment of this mandate that began back in 2018. As you heard, when we came together to create a program that would be a place for ongoing learning and ongoing guidance and support for our Black and Brown young men who are far from graduating and at risk for dropping out. We are a growing team and we are committed to delivering high-quality project-based instruction for our students as well as work-based learning opportunities that are centrally located to our current campus in Roxbury at the Timolte. Our program at BDA 2.0 has expanded and has already forced us to move once before. Our second year of programming was sent, sent our campus into a virtual setting. And we're currently operating in a space that's a bit overcrowded in one corridor, the ground floor at the Timolte. The end of this academic school year will mark the first complete year of in-person learning at the Timolte.
Twenty seconds.
We serve some of the city's most overlooked and underserved populations. And because of those, we take every effort to implement a trauma-centered approach. One part of this approach is ensuring that students have clear expectations about what will happen next. Since the school committee announced the closing of the Timolte, we have been able to tell our students what to expect next. We asked the school committee grant us the peace of mind in having reasonable assurance that we will be able to return to the building that we've grown to see as our home. We know that COVID has had an impact on communities of color that we're going to continue to feel for some time moving forward. And because of this learning loss, we anticipate the demand for alternative ed to increase over time. Because of this, we are asking the board to consider a request for the same thing that every other high school student has in the district, which is a classroom that is appropriately sized, fitness areas, access to quality food, and fine space for counseling. Thank you for all your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Our next speaker is Alyssa Hunter.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Hunter. I'm a mental health professional working for Wadeco Boston at the Home for Little Wanderers. I am also a Board of Trustees member for Boston Day and Evening Academy. I would like to share about Boston Day and Evening's 2.0 program and its desire to remain at the Timolte Middle School. BDEA 2.0 has been housed at the Timolte since it began in 2018. It was created when we noticed that our Black and Latino young men were not progressing as quickly as their female peers. Currently, BDEA 2.0 serves 40 young men and their families, meeting their social, emotional needs through consistency and work-based learning within intentionally designed cohort of students, educators, and support staff. This has resulted in a high level of student engagement. Our request is that the program remain open at the Timolte and have all the resources that are required to function, but more importantly, for our students to thrive, which includes nursing, safety services, and healthy and nutritious food. While aware that the Timolte is closing, we have not been notified that our program can no longer be housed there. In conclusion, I would add that the reason I am on the Boston Day and Evening Academy Board is due to my expertise in the mental health field. And I can't share enough about how BDEA has demonstrated a commitment to students' social, emotional well-being and is an ideal model of a school meeting the mental health needs of some of the district's most vulnerable students. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Daly.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, good evening.
Yeah, I apologize. Oh, sugar. Okay, yeah. Okay. So first of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak here. And I want to thank you all too for tabling any action as it relates to the MOA and in prolonging me to give voice to this. I truly feel you did the right thing, the prudent and honorable course of action in tabling this whole matter with the MOA for now. I just want to let you know that I recently sent an email to school committee members. And in that, I attached two legal documents that are highly significant with regard to any action that might be considered on the MOA that is proposed by the teachers' union. The first is a pending complaint against the teachers' union for violating their own bylaws and ignoring the written notice and supermajority vote provisions required to approve the measures contained in the MOA. The second document that I submitted is an injunction that was granted today in favor of the local 718 firefighters along with, I believe, the detectives and the superior officers, preventing the mayor's employee vaccine mandate from being implemented. You know, and it's our contention. And it should be obvious to any objective person that the ruling on the injunction makes the MOA entirely unnecessary. And the procedure by which the MOA was voted on was illegal and unauthorized. We urge you all to give serious consideration to not supporting this unlawful and unnecessary measure. And I just want to thank you for your attention in this matter.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eileen Carver.
Superintendent Casilius, members of the school committee, my name is Eileen Carver. I've been working in the Boston Public Schools since 1991, the large majority of these years as a classroom teacher. The Shaw is a rare school community, one that we should prioritize to preserve. Under the collaborative leadership of Principal Davis, our school site council, and ILT, the Shaw is a school where the voices of families and students are elevated in every aspect of what we do. Despite the budget we received from BPS, we have taken some comfort when Dr. C. shared with us, no decision is final until the budget process is complete and she and the school committee use the racial equity tool to examine the decisions that have been made. Compared with the 19 schools that have been chosen for K-6 expansion, the Shaw has the highest percentage of Black students and the highest percentage of students of color. And as for the size of our school, there are five others on the K-6 expansion list that are of a similar size. At a time when thousands of families have left BPS, don't we want to grow, not further dismantle, a school that is treasured by families? We know you listen to some families. CFO Kuter said last week, advocacy does change our budget. We want families to know their voices matter. We've seen this reflected in changes that already have been made this year. The question our school community asks is, what about us? Do our voices hold the same weight as those from these other neighborhoods? We have endured enormous loss over the past two years. Our children and community need stability, nurturing, and a feeling of security. I applaud the district for the plan to increase the number of school counselors. And I believe BPS leadership wants to do everything possible to mitigate further social, emotional crises, not create them. As opposed to a worldwide pandemic, the preservation of a cherished school community is an issue we have control over.
Carver?
determine the value of a school whose perspectives count. Aren't schools more than buildings? Don't let the teaching and learning relationships be disrupted at another Matapan school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Rosalina Piazza, followed by Denise Lupiana's, Kunta Barros, Tricia Flaherty, Nick DePina, and Sharon Hinton. If you could please raise your hands in Zoom. Rosalina? Okay, Rosalina is not with us in the meeting. Let's try Denise Lupiana's.
Hi, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I have reached out to, I think, everybody here on the panel. And so I greatly appreciate this opportunity to to express how I feel about this mandate and the MOA. I understand it's been tabled. I don't know if it will be back on the table soon. I'm a 28-year veteran teacher. Past 20 years, I have taught kindergarten. I'm currently at the Charter School. And I love my job. I'm teaching my kids to read and write, and I don't think there's anything greater than that. What I'm, what I do every day with these kids and what they're learning. And as the MOA is written, it would take me out of the classroom for an undetermined amount of time, several times over a school year, I imagine. I just want to give some perspective. At the start of the pandemic, cloth masks were issued by Boston Public Schools with the little logo. We now know that those masks are useless, right? Plexiglass dividers were put in my classroom. We know now that they inhibited air circulation. They don't use them anymore. We had to walk six feet apart when we were walking to the cafeteria or wherever. We know that was based on nothing. And given Pfizer's request to wait 75 years to disclose what's in their vaccines, you know, you're putting us at risk. I requested, I put in for religious exemption. They were all denied. They were summarily denied. And we have not been respected as teachers. And I am asking the school committee to please, please be the voice of reason because we're not getting that from Mayor Wu. And we need your support. We want to teach. I don't want to be home feeling perfectly well based on metrics that...
Ms. Lupiana's?
Yes.
I'm afraid you're past your time.
Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Kunta Barros has not signed into the meeting, so our next speaker will be Tricia Flaherty.
Hi. It's good to be here. I appreciate the opportunity. I just wanted to say a few words. I again want to kind of reiterate what some of my colleagues have said regarding the mandate and kind of this opportunity to let the school committee know, you know, I realize we're not the majority unvaccinated teachers, but I also think that the way all the mandate has gone down has been very discouraging for both vaccinated and unvaccinated teachers. If I could just read a little bit. At a time when Boston Public students are most vulnerable and in most need of stability and support, this MOA, it was reckless and unfair. And I hope that, you know, we see that. We come to school buildings every day to teach and support our students. We taught remotely. We taught in person in uncertain times. We brought food and school supplies to families during the height of the pandemic with the main priority being the students and not ourselves. We video called after hours and weekends with families in crisis during remote learning using our own personal time, and they still continue to put the needs ahead, you know? We were given a choice upon returning to school that we would be able to test in lieu of vaccination and that seemed to make most people feel safe as anyone can transmit this virus. I realize that, you know, this may hopefully be the end of this mandate, but I think that it's, you know, reckless of us to think that this couldn't happen again in regards to anything. And I think it needs to be brought to the attention of the school committee, how these agreements are put into place and, you know, the discrimination that occurred during, you know, this, this time of voting and this time that the mandate was put forward and the time that the opportunity to, you know, look over the MOA was put forward. And that's a discredit to our union. But I would like to, you know, hope that you guys would take a look at everything. And if the opportunity presented itself that you guys had to vote, that you would definitely vote to not implement this mandate because it is a disgrace. And I think that we want our teachers in the schools. We don't want them on unpaid leave without the opportunity to feed their own children and, you know, do their jobs and the job that we want to do. So I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Flaherty. Nick DePina is not signed into the meeting, so our next speaker will be Sharon Hinton, followed by Katalia Felix, Rochelle Malord, Maggie Mancuso, Erin Conley, and Amy Van Weggeten. If you could please raise your hands in Zoom. Sharon Hinton?
Good evening. I'm Sharon Hinton, mother, educator, community advocate, Hyde Park homeowner, and president of Black Teachers Matter Incorporated. In two minutes, where do I begin? Shall I reiterate the pending possibility of a DESI takeover and receivership? Wonder if my tax dollars are paying for the remainder of superintending Casilius's contract? Ask more questions about what will happen to the teachers, especially Black teachers who run out of vacation and sick days if COVID surges again and they remain unvaccinated? And what is going to happen to the students who graduate this year and are still unprepared for life or work because graduation rates need to look as high or higher than last year? Three years ago, in a community meeting in Matapan, I met a hopeful newly hired superintendent. I told her, I like your ideas, what you're saying and planning to do. I hope you stay around long enough to implement them. Three years later, she's leaving, just like the previous superintendents, this time with no answers about why. Because questions on these matters are not answered at this time. I wish the superintendent well. And for those of us who must stay, I wish us better. What do we get from thousands of hours of testimonies? A lot of questions, including a $450,000 question. Questions but no answers, just more concerns for parents, students, and teachers at the PA Shaw, the King, the Timolte, Madison Park, and so many others. Maybe the return to an all-elective school committee is the answer. Maybe not. Over 90,000 voters think so. Maybe a superintendent from Boston or at least Massachusetts who grew up here and knows our history will work. Maybe, who knows? At this time, we all know one thing. Whatever this is, is not working. And it's broken, and it's been broken for a long time. At least with an elected school committee, the voice of the voters will have to be listened to or there will be consequences for those who don't listen or answer. Celebrate Black history and thank you.
Our next speaker is Katalia Phoenix. Felix, excuse me.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Katalia Felix, and I currently work at the Jackson Man. And I'm pretty much, I wanted to voice my concerns in regard to the new MOA that was presented. As the previous teachers, the unvaccinated teachers, has mentioned that it's not a good deal for us. When we didn't have enough time to look at it. It's illegal. The bylaws were violated, so I just want you guys to actually listen to what we have to say. I just came from the emergency room due to stress of what this is causing me. And it's not right. It's not fair that, you know, we're as the one being affected by this, we're not included in this decision, and it was just taken and ran off with. So I'm asking you guys to please reconsider this MOA. It's not beneficial for the teachers. Furthermore, I'm thinking of my K-2 classroom right now with children on the spectrum where if I'm out based on the metrics, my kids will suffer. So I want you guys first with the children first and then consider the educators. But please do consider this MOA that's going to be presented to you guys. It's not fair at all. The kids will suffer the most, and of course, the burden will fall on the teachers that are there because now they have to cover two classrooms. So I'm asking you guys to please reconsider this MOA. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rochelle Malord.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. For allowing me to speak, I appreciate the time. As my understanding goes, I believe that the MOA vote has been tabled, and I just want to thank you for considering. I did send an email to any of the chair already. So I just wanted to thank you for tabling it and to really consider the effect, the impact this may have on our students the most if we are put on unpaid leave. Again, we don't even have enough teachers to cover, and the disruption that will take place is unnecessary. With teachers, we want to work, we want to be with our students. So thank you for tabling it.
Thank you. My next speaker is Maggie Mancuso, followed by Erin Conley, Amy Van Wagenen, Laura Ross, and Dr. Sarah Cherry Rice. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Maggie?
Hello?
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yep.
Okay. My name is Maggie Moran Mancuso, and I'm a parent of three children in BPS living in Dorchester, Massachusetts. I'd like to comment regarding on the tentative MOA between Boston School Committee and the Teachers Union. The past two years have been nothing short of a living nightmare for the students, teachers, and staff of BPS. The long days on Zoom affected each and every one of us in our social and emotional health. Our teachers have worked tirelessly to make Zoom classes work and to reach through the computer screens to build relationships with each and every one of our children. We have to acknowledge not only are our teachers educators, they are social workers, they're counselors, and they were first responders during the pandemic. Now, looking back, it's also clear that the teachers, staff, and children became an unsinkable ship, together weathering the storm and rolling up our sleeves. They carried each child in every family through the school year. As our bond became stronger, BPS and BTU removed themselves as they weren't on the ground floor and had no idea what was actually going on. Before vaccinations were ever created, teachers were sent back to schools and told to open the windows, keep masks on, and make sure whatever happens in the classroom stays there in fear they'd be terminated for speaking against BPS. These teachers weren't sent back to filthy classrooms. They cleaned them themselves. They took care of our babies and truly are the unsung heroes. We know this now because while they fought for our children's education, BPS, BTU, and Mayor Wu's office decided on their own to implement a vaccination mandate that is un-American. The BPS and BTU have lost sight of what really matters. Our children lost valuable years of in-school learning, and our teachers, after showing up and working tirelessly, are now being thrown out. Good teachers, smart teachers, hard-working teachers with families are being told their body and their own medical freedoms are no longer their own. The teachers and kids remain to stick together. My kids absolutely adore their teachers. And the thought of anyone being forced out sickens me. You're causing segregation in our schools. You're causing unnecessary damage that will never be fixed if you proceed with this mandate. Our schools are understaffed now. Pulling more out due to personal freedom is unmoral, unethical, and I would strongly suggest all teachers and staff pull your union dues, as the BTU doesn't care about the families and members of their union. They have evolved with their own political agendas, and it will really catch up with them. Unmask the kids. They've sacrificed enough. And remove the vaccination mandate to leave our hard-working teachers alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Conley is not signed into the meeting, so our next speaker will be Amy Van Wagenen.
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Amy Van Wagenen, and I'm here speaking as a member of the Board of Trustees of Boston Green Academy. I'm also a teacher at Boston Green Academy and a resident of Hyde Park. And thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm speaking in support of an item that's on your agenda about extended day pay for teachers. This is an item that has been taken up by the Board at Boston Green Academy and also by our BTU local group, and I am really thrilled to be able to ask for your support and to be able to have your attention to the really hard and dedicated work of our staff. We serve at Boston Green Academy, an incredible group of Boston young people. Our mission is to educate people of all abilities and to train them to become leaders in the sustainability of our world. And it takes extra time for us to do that. We have worked extra hours enthusiastically and without compensation for many years at Boston Green Academy, and I feel like it is time for us to be recognized for that work. Our staff would be thrilled to be able to have that recognition and support for the hard work that we do. Our BTU reps, our school community, our school leadership, our Board of Trustees have all approved this and are really enthusiastic about it, and we hope that we can garner your support as well. Thank you so much for all the work that you do in caring for our young people.
Thank you, Amy. Our next speaker is Laura Ross.
Can you, okay, hi. Everyone can hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Laura Ross, and I am a teacher at the Mauro Yumana Academy in East Boston. I know it's been a long night, and you all have sat through a lot. And I know the MOU has been tabled, but I wanted to speak to. Oh, hold on. I'm thankful for your committee's attention tonight. I've been a special needs teacher here in Boston for over 15 years. I've always been evaluated as either proficient or exemplary for my entire career in every standard. I am saddened to stand before you categorized as unverified according to the new MOU. The root of the word "varied" comes from the Latin word "veritas," or truthful. The prefix "un" means not. So here I am, all of my work and the years I have been in this district supporting families, children, and teachers is summed up in that one word: unverified. Untruthful. What a harsh and ugly feel it has on my lips. I, along with so many of my fellow teachers, am untruthful, not because of my behavior in the classroom or the workplace, not because I have been untruthful, but because I took the choice I was given and promised at the start of the school year and remained unvaccinated. I will now speak in the plural as "we." "We" being my brothers and sisters whom are also unverified. We have been ridiculed, called out, shamed, accused of spreading COVID, being uncaring, hateful, loud, obnoxious people, not worthy of having resources wasted on us in our cries for fairness and equity. We have had our religious exemptions denied, our physicians harassed, our attempts to let the world know what is happening to us silenced, laughed at, and ignored. We have written hundreds of letters and emails, made phone calls, and carried on face-to-face conversations with politicians, teachers, families, press, and unions in our attempt to be treated with fairness and equity and have our voices heard. All of this because Mayor Wu has broken a promise. And somewhere along the way, our union has decided we are not worthy of being treated as men and women with intelligent ideas and beliefs that should be respected. So I ask you, who is really unverified and untruthful? Say no to this MOU. Tell the mayor to keep the promises that were made. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Sarah Cherry Rice, followed by Liz Gomes, Rebecca O'Donnell, Andrea Higgins, Deidra Dustu, Tracy Doyle, and Mike Heishman. If you could please raise your virtual hands in Zoom. Dr. Cherry Rice?
Hi, thank you and good evening. I'm excited to speak to the Boston School Committee tonight and also the superintendent. My name is Dr. Sarah Cherry Rice, and I'm the founder of a nonprofit here in Boston called Digital Ready. I'm also a parent of three Boston public school children. First, I want to start off by thanking the superintendent. I sent today a proposal to each of you in your inbox proposing a citywide early college pathway for the city of Boston. This builds on the work that the superintendent has already laid to open up access to early college to students who attend a high school here in the city in the lowest 10 percentile of high schools in the state. Currently, 17,000 students in our district attend a school ranked in the bottom 10%. Digital Ready is a profit that I founded in 2019 to address the growing inequities in our city's high schools. In partnership with the University of Massachusetts in Amherst, one of the top public universities in the country for STEM, we have launched an early college STEM pathway to activate Boston's future Black and Latinx innovators. In our pilot, students have the opportunity to earn 18 no-cost college credits in high-demand technical fields, live in a college dorm, and have a seven-day meal plan. They are surrounded by a community of support of faculty, teachers, industry experts, and peers who understand, nurture, and accelerate their pathway to Boston's Innovation Academy. Applying for college was already difficult for many students in our city, and the pandemic has almost made it impossible. In Boston, although we have 45 higher education institutions, less than 1% of Boston High School students have asked us to early college pathways. I am urgently requesting that the Boston School Committee and Mayor Wu work together to advance the work of early college here in the city. On March 8th, we'll be submitting a prospectus for the citywide early college academies, and we're asking for the Boston School Committee's support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Liz Gomes.
Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for taking me at this meeting. As a parent of a special needs child, my son has autism. I'm calling against the MOA. Have they seriously considered what it will do to our children of special needs? This is the thing that the piano here and BPS does and the mayor doesn't understand is that our kids don't transition well. And as is, we have a shortage of special needs students. And once they're not settled with a transition, they come home, they take the tantrum out on us. We're the ones who have to deal with that. What do we say? What are we gonna do? I have called Dr. Casilius's office. I have called Special Ed's office. I have called numerous of offices to speak in reference to special needs within the city of Boston, and it only falls on deaf ears. When are they gonna start to listen to the cries of special needs students? Autism is on a high rise. It's not going nowhere. Every day, it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And our kids are the ones who get the most money and are federally protected, but yet uneducated because they seem to just pass them along.
20 seconds.
Put yourself. Let's just say that was your kid. What would you do? It's not going to make a difference until it happens to somebody in the committee who has a special needs child to feel what a parent goes through. And then to turn around, as a parent, a taxpayer to call and ask to speak to one of the higher-ups in BPS and just fall on deaf ears?
Excuse me, Ms. Gomes. I think you're past your time.
I know. They never have time. I know.
We do have your information from your sign-up, so we'll pass along your information to the superintendent's staff for follow-up. Thank you.
I've tried, and deaf ears.
Our next speaker is Rebecca O'Donnell.
Yes, good evening. Hi. I'm a teacher at the Perry School. I've been teaching special education for the last 15 years. I came on to share a letter that was written by 27 of my fellow vaccinated colleagues from the Perry School in support of the unvaccinated teachers at my school. Dear Boston School Committee, the undersigned members of the Perry School wish to express our solidarity with the unvaccinated employees throughout the city, as well as our concern over the level of services available to our students upon the dismissal of these staff members at our school. 33% of our special education providers are slated to be released from their duties should the Boston School Committee approve this MOA. Even if we were able to hire staff as highly trained as ours, which is doubtful, the amount of time required to build relationships with children of greater needs is substantial. Personal learning materials accumulated over decades of workshops and trainings would be lost along with these employees. Staff morale, already tenuous given the difficulties of the past two years. Staff morale, already tenuous given the difficulties of the past two years, could suffer a potentially fatal blow. Most large cities and towns surrounding Boston allow for a testing alternative for those opting out of the vaccine. We believe the financial costs associated with daily testing for unvaccinated city employees will be far less than the cost associated with hiring, training and inevitable lawsuits, not to mention the societal costs associated with services being unmet throughout the city while this upheaval occurs. The scientific data keeps yielding results which undermine the mandate as a one-size-fits-all solution. We are seeing vaccinated people getting the virus and unvaccinated people remaining virus-free. Loyal employees with unpaid administrative leave based on scientific information that is not convincing enough to have vaccine mandates introduced throughout the country is misguided at the very least, hazardous to the viability of the city life at its worst and quite frankly, smacks of grandstanding. We implore you to present our arguments in the strongest possible manner to the mayor's office so that she may see the irreparable damage inflicted upon the city if she follows through with this extreme plan.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. Our next speaker is Andrea Higgins.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak towards the MOA, but I just, I was listening to the the students and the parents from the JP Shaw and how they were talking about their teachers and the education that they're giving them. And I just, if you guys are gonna end up voting in the future on an MOA, I hope that you look at it and see that taking a teacher away from a student for even one day, you know, in the MOA, it says that they'll be put on unpaid leave for however long it lasts. I think taking a teacher away from a student, you, you, you heard the kids, you heard the parents. It's just, it would be wrong. And from September, we were given the right to test and we've been in and we've been testing and everything's been fine. And, you know, we, we struggled with when we found out that we were gonna be put on unpaid leave or possibly lose a job. What, what do we say to our students? How to, you know, what happens? We can't just leave and, you know, not say anything to them. So I just can't imagine one of my students, just the next day maybe gone and them not knowing why. And especially right now, I'm working with students with all different abilities and they don't transition well. And it would be devastating to them to, to lose a teacher. And I think that that should be the main consideration that when you look at this MOA, you know, as, as someone that came in testing all along and knew that when I went into the building, I was safe, there's no reason for me to not still be able to do that with my students and continue the stability that they have and the connections that we have with our, with our kids. I think that's the, the main thing that you need to look at when you, if you end up having to vote on an MOA ever, ever again. What's gonna impact the, the kids? And that's it. I appreciate the time to be able to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deidra Dostoo. Okay. All right, since Deidra's not accepting, let's try Tracy Doyle, followed by Mike Heishman.
Hi, hi, my name is Tracy Doyle. I'm also a teacher at the Perry School and I don't think I can say anything more convincingly what my colleagues have already said to you. I support, I am vaccinated. I support my unvaccinated colleagues. I truly believe it's an overstep of boundaries at best under the MOA. That being said, I would like to take this opportunity to just want to say, just to address in, how to say, an unequitable school start times while we're here. We live in the hub of the universe of education. We are surrounded by universities and colleges that fall under nonprofit that are enrolled in the pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes. At this time, I'd like to recommend that we look into having those universities adopt zones within our school districts and act as mentors to the children that they should be nourishing so that they can come up in the ranks and attend these universities and colleges. I'd also like to see them supplement the school budget to help build facilities that actually would help during times like these during the pandemic where they could come in and use the payments that they should be paying for taxes to help give our kids what they need within the school building walls. And I'd also like to see the school bus times be equitable for all the children. And I know the kids get bussed along the city because they say it's more equitable to do this. It's actually the children that need it most that get left at school waiting for buses. If we have some of these universities pay more directly into the city programs, maybe we can get some more buses so the kids can begin and end at times that are reasonable so they can take part in programs that begin at, at certain times after school instead of being pulled. And so that they can go ahead and form relationships within their neighborhoods and be home with their families and not be waiting around for buses and being stuck on buses during bad weather. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Heishman.
Am I here? Yes. Mike Heishman, Dorchester, Beja. Not part of my prepared testimony. I stand with the scooter bomb and the mayor on the Boston Teachers Union for protecting our, the health of our children, our educators and our community. And I'm very sad to hear the stuff I've been hearing the last half hour or so. Nothing is more important than the health, safety of our children, our community and our educators. Prepared testimony. Déjà vu all over again, Yogi Berra. I'm sick and tired of seeing the same old awful movie. Mayor Walsh fired Dr. Chang. He received a generous severance package paid for by tax, taxpayer dollars. We went through a lengthy and expensive process to hire a new leader, which I just discovered was paid for by corporate dollars. Do we know why Dr. Chang was fired? Of course not. This is not what democracy looks like. The school committee had evaluated Dr. Cassilius's performance and had voted to extend her contract. Because you're unelected, your judgment doesn't matter. Typically speaking, the job of hiring and firing a superintendent is the job of the school committee. We have a brand-new mayor, someone who I had supported. She just fired Dr. Cassilius. Déjà vu all over again. Do we know why Mayor Wu fired our superintendent? Of course not. Dr. Cassilius will be generously compensated because Mayor Wu broke her contract. Let's throw everything up in the air again. This time do not be an interim. Mayor Wu says that she will have her new appointed leader in the next few months. Does she know who? Who knows? In the meantime, Dr. Cassilius will hold down the fort and wave goodbye to the members, membership of her leadership team who suddenly have to search for greener pastures. Would there be a democratic process where students, parents, educators and community members have the significance saying what they want and who they want to be our next school leader? No, our unelected school committee will come up with a sham project later this evening. Unelected school committee. This would never have happened without a, with an elected school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heishman. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Your testimony is extremely important to us. Our only action item this evening is the approval of two appointments to the committee's English Language Learners Task Force. You'll recall that at our February second meeting, I nominated committee member Rafaela Polanco Garcia to serve as task force co-chair alongside long-term co-chair Suzanne Lee. Ms. Polanco Garcia will fill the leadership role formerly held by Hernani Derujo, whose school committee term expired in January. I also nominated Roxy Harvey, Chair of the Boston Fed PAC, to serve as a member of the ELL Task Force. I want to thank Ms. Polanco Garcia and Ms. Harvey for their willingness to serve in these important roles. I will now open it up to the committee for any final questions and comments. Are there any questions? None? There are no questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments of Rafaela Polanco Garcia and Roxy Harvey to the ELL Task Force as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Here is none. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardette Hernandez? I think you're muted.
Apologies, my computer was freezing. Yes.
Thank you. Ms. LoPera?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neal?
Yes, and thank you to Ms. Harvey and gracias to Ms. Polanco Garcia for their willingness to serve.
Ms. Robinson?
Absolutely, yes.
The motion is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Polanco Garcia. Would you like to say, congratulations, Ms. Polanco Garcia, would you like to say a few words?
Aquí estoy para servir a mi comunidad.
So, good evening. I'm here to serve my community.
Esperamos que con esta nueva oportunidad que me presentan muchos aprendices del idioma inglés se acerquen mucho más.
So I'm hoping that with this opportunity that you're offering me, more members of the ELL community will come to me.
Queremos escuchar de todas las nacionalidades y que vengan y sientan que tienen aquí una persona que lo entiende y conoce sus necesidades porque yo soy una usuaria de primera mano de lo que es ser inmigrante y aprendiz del idioma inglés.
So I hope that all nationalities will feel our welcome, that I am willing to listen. I understand firsthand what it is to be an immigrant and a user of English as a second language.
Así que aquí estoy y muchas gracias por la oportunidad.
So I'm here for you all and thank you so much for this great opportunity.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our first report for the Horace Mann Indistrict Charter Schools Extended Time Pay for the following schools: Boston Green Academy, Dudley Street Neighborhood Charter School, Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Doorchester. At this time, I'd like to invite Chief Financial Officer Nate Cooter to please give his presentation. First, I'd like to invite the superintendent to offer open remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just that I'm in support of this provision and it's probably long overdue as an equity measure. So I'll go ahead and turn this on, turn it over to Nate.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Chairwoman Robinson. Good evening, school committee members. Tonight, we're presenting you with a request with the, for a change in compensation for teachers at our Boston Public Schools Horace Mann Charter Schools. The change is consistent with compensation for staff at other district schools. Included with the memo that we presented this evening are letters from each of the governing bodies of the four schools. It includes Boston Green Academy, Dudley Street Neighborhood Charter School, Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Doorchester. The district is in support of their recommendation to increase the compensation of BTU members who are covered under the Teachers' Collective Bargaining Agreement to account for the extended teacher work hours at each school. As background, all BPS Elementary and K-8 schools are either required to have an extended day through Schedule A, through the Schedule A agreement, or have the option to extend their day through their autonomies. All BPS autonomous high schools have the option of an extended day. If any of these schools choose to extend the day, they have a portion of their hours paid for by the district budget. This is over and above any allocation received through their weighted student funding. There are in the district six total Horace Mann charters, also referred to as in-district charter schools. This includes Kennedy Health Careers, Boston Day and Evening Academy, BDEA, Boston Green Academy, Up Boston, Up Doorchester and the Dudley Street Neighborhood Charter School. Two of the schools, the Kennedy Health Careers and BDEA, are already included in our pilot school agreement for extended time pay. BTU members are already compensated at the rate we are proposing for these other schools. The extended day competition, compensation, excuse me, is different for the four other Horace Mann Charter Schools. The contract makes no mention of the other four schools. And in short, the teachers at these four schools work extended hours but are paid as if they work a traditional shorter day. The recommendation is for the three Horace Mann Charter serving grades pre-K through eight, which includes Up Boston, Up Doorchester and Dudley Street, that they join the Schedule A pay scale if teachers work at least the same number of hours as a Schedule A teacher. For Boston Green Academy, a six through twelve, the recommendation is to increase the compensation of BTU members at BGA so that their additional work hours above and beyond the workday in traditional secondary schools are compensated in accordance to Article Three, Section E of the Teachers' Collective Bargaining Agreement. This only impacts teaching staff as paraprofessionals are already hourly employees and getting paid for their full workday. The estimated cost is eight hundred thousand dollars, which we, which is already included in our district's extended time budget proposal for FY23. With me this evening are leaders from each of the four Horace Mann schools and I'll turn it back over to Chairwoman Robinson for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cooter. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Are there any questions at this time? Again, are there any questions? Okay, thank you. My, my only question, Mr. Cooter, are there any other types of schools within the BPS group that have different salary schedules besides these four or everybody else on the same salary schedule?
The two schools that are in district receivership, the Dever and Holland, have different compensation schedules than other district schools.
Okay, but everybody else then is, once these four come into play, everybody else will be alone?
Everyone else is consistent with pay across the different school types, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Cardette Hernandez? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
I'm curious about sort of the, the birth of this. Did this come from the schools or was this something identified through your team name?
That's a great question. I believe this was actually raised by a number of the school leaders. In particular, Boston Green Academy and the Up schools came to us in conversations with their teachers. And so we are in support of it working because the teacher consistency in pay across different school types was a, a big part of the last collective bargaining agreement with the union.
Any other questions? There are no other questions. I want to thank you for the, your report and the committee will look forward to taking action on this recommendation at our next meeting. Finally, tonight, we have a report on the superintendent's search committee process. We'll pause for a moment while Superintendent Consolius signs off from the meeting for this portion of the discussion. We will invite the superintendent to rejoin the meeting after we close out this discussion. As you all know, Mayor Michelle Wu, Superintendent Consolius, and I reached an agreement that the superintendent would depart at the completion of school year in 20, in June 2022. As in common with all new administration, the mayor has been assembling her leadership team and recruiting individuals who help implement her vision for Boston. I want to thank the mayor and superintendent for how intentionally they approached this agreement. Both the mayor and the superintendent care deeply about Boston and about our students. It's with respect for each other and the work we do that we've come to this mutual decision. There's no question that BPS has made significant progress under Superintendent, Superintendent Consolius's leadership in part with the school committee and the city. From passing important policies to directing new strategic investments to committing to more equitable solutions with students and families at the center, BPS is in a strong position to move forward. In talking with the mayor and the superintendent, this timing made the most sense to provide us with the opportunity to identify a successor while Superintendent and Consolius maintains the important work for the remainder of the school year. Tonight, I will provide a brief update on the superintendent's transition from BPS as well as the search committee process and our next steps from here. As you are aware, Superintendent Consolius has an employment contract with the school committee to determine the appropriate next steps for Superintendent Consolius's transition. We have engaged the City of Boston Corporation Council to assist in drafting a separation agreement. The Corporation Council has provided a proposed separation agreement that adheres to the terms of the superintendent's contract and is inconsistent with similar past agreements. The school committee was briefed in an executive session early tonight on potential terms of the separation agreement and will hold a special school committee meeting to focus on the superintendent's search on March 2. During that meeting, we will publicly share the details of the superintendent's separation agreement, and I will also ask the committee to authorize me as chair to agree and to sign the agreement. Now, we will pivot to a conversation about the next steps we will follow as the committee to select the next superintendent. We are fortunate to have with us tonight Glenn Kucher, Executive Director of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Mr. Kucher is well versed in the superintendent's search process and is prepared to guide the superintendent vacancies that I think would be helpful for the committee to review, particularly for our newer members. Mr. Kucher?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I've, I've prepared some remarks to inform the committee about what the climate is like, what the process is like, and to give you an idea of what steps a school committee goes through as it seeks its superintendent. It's okay to proceed. I'll do that now.
Yes, please do.
It is the school, one of the school committee's primary roles is to retain contract with and evaluate the superintendent of schools and to provide policy for the superintendent to carry out those responsibilities. They are extended and they are very powerful responsibilities. The school committee, if it is interested in expediting the process, and at this later time in the year now with, with about four months left in the school year, you may need to move efficiently and quickly, but you can still do it transparently and with the involvement of the community in several ways we could talk about. It is important that the school committee get a search committee together very quickly. The search committee is important because only a search committee and not the school committee itself is allowed by the Attorney General to provide a confidential initial screening and interview of candidates. And it's very important to the process that candidates be able to apply in confidence and go through the initial screening rather than be exposed to, to the public prior to the final stage of the superintendent's search process, and I'll be happy to clarify if people have questions. As to the environment, we are seeing a number of people leaving the superintendency as COVID appears to be on the wane and they feel that they can now leave without deserting their school districts. But prior to this, a lot of people stayed longer than they might otherwise have to see everybody through the, the COVID process. Still, the number of people who are applying for superintendencies across the country is significantly lower than it might have been a generation ago. There are a number of reasons for this. It's very difficult work, especially in Massachusetts. You have issues of accountability, financial issues, labor relations issues, and the challenge of trying to educate children when the school committee has very little control over the social and emotional issues that go on outside of the school building. Housing, nutrition, healthcare, social issues, all the things that support kids in school are beyond the control of the school committee to a large extent. But yet you are responsible for the education of children, and that's a big burden for superintendents, and a lot of people don't want to take it on. Moreover, in cities, there are a lot of people who want to help you do your job. As, as a former superintendent in Boston once told me, three jobs everybody in Boston can do, and that's manage the Red Sox, be the chief of police, and be the superintendent of schools. Everybody wants to help you do the job. The media is all over you. It's a highly visible position where there's a lot of pressure that goes with it. So as I say, the number of applications has not been what it had been in the past. Also, during a crisis, people become risk averse. They don't want to take chances to get up and leave. I think we're now at the precipice of, not the precipice, but the, the horizon where we can see the end of that kind of concern and people may be more willing to take risks. There is the cost of real estate and the cost of locating families if people want to come here. There are a lot of people around the country who've passed through Boston on the way to their careers, and they all follow what's going on in Boston. We've had a lot of inquiries from people who are asking about when is Boston going to open, how can I have an opportunity to apply? We're referring them all to the school district as they come in. But there's interest, and that, that is exciting, and for a lot of reasons, you should be encouraged. There are a lot of people who are also going to want to help you with your search whether you like it or not. That includes a lot of people of, from special interests who are concerned about things like special education, bilingual education, services to those in social and economic need, and they're going to want to be involved in the process. But on the plus side, Boston is a great place to be. It is a, it's a city where I think it's always been more important to make the honor roll than the football team. That's not the case in a lot of parts of the country. We value our scholars. We value high student achievement. Expectations are high. We have a lot of the leading colleges and universities, particularly ones that train school administrators, BU, BC, UMass, the State College System, Harvard, Northeastern, all of them train educational leaders. So there are a lot of people who are prepared to lead school districts who passed through Boston and are going to be interested in this position. It's a cultural center. The opportunity to partner with businesses is great. And as I said, there are a lot of educators who have been in the city and who will be referring their friends and taking inquiries as well. And your link to the Council of Great City Schools will be invaluable to, to you as you look to the best candidates around the country to come to Boston. So, a search process works in this way. And I provided a list, which, which you're welcome to share, Madam Chair, but you know, number one, you find out about the vacancy, you let the universe of candidates know there's a vacancy. You get a search committee going so that the pieces are in place to expedite action that needs to happen. You put the materials together that show the universe of candidates what your profile is for the superintendent, what the district looks like, what the timetable for the search is, and what the decision criteria will be for picking a superintendent. You want people to know what you're looking for so that people can see if their skills are the right match. Then, you gather input from the stakeholders. Usually, the school committee conducts meetings, puts out a survey, gathers data on what the community is telling it to do as it looks for a superintendent to get feedback into the process. And then the recruitment process begins. Now, I know that you'll probably retain a search consultant who will help you with this stuff. Search consultants often represent candidates, so they know a lot of people who want to be superintendents. You have candidates who are probably known to members of the Friends of Boston Public Schools community who'll be out there telling people about the vacancy. One of the best factors that can help a search recruit effectively is when members of the school committee are actively engaged in cheerleading the process. You're going to get calls, you're going to hear from people. You may be at meetings where you will see people who will know people, people who may be interested. The school committee members should not be reluctant to identify to your search consultant those people who they think would be good candidates so that they can be reached by the search consultant to do this. You want to reach out to those programs that train superintendents in the colleges and universities around the country. We have some, some very good training programs in Massachusetts. There are others around the country. Just a couple of weeks ago, I was on the phone with the, the person who runs the, the Urban Superintendence Program at Howard University. Again, very interested in what's going on in Boston because he represents and has trained a lot of some of the best people out there looking. All of those people are here. You have leaders of the field of education. You have a staple of superintendents who know their colleagues around the country. You have the opportunity to do some broad advertising, although I have to tell you, money thrown at newspapers to advertise superintendent vacancies is often wasted money. Most people, most people looking for superintendencies look at your social media, they're looking at websites, they're looking at the state school boards associations, of which we are a member of the National Sports Association. They'll post your vacancies. We post your vacancies. The superintendent's association will post your vacancies. And that's where people go to look to see what's happening in Massachusetts and who's out there. And those are free services that you are entitled to use because you're members of all of those associations.
Excuse me, Mr. Kucher?
Yes.
I'm not sure if you have a piece of paper on your laptop, but it's up against the microphone and it's making it somewhat difficult to hear you.
I'm sorry. Let's try again. Is that better now? Can you hear me? Is it better?
Yes, sir.
That, that's an improvement? Okay, I did have a piece of paper on my keyboard. I have no idea where the microphone is on this computer, but I know where the camera is. Thank you for that, for that. I say, social media is very important. The national organizations are very important, and the local organizations are very important to help you find the appropriate candidates. Your search consultant will probably aggregate all the applications for you. I would strongly recommend that the search committee see all the applications that are submitted and that the search committee determines for itself who they'd like to interview at a confidential initial screening process, which is available to you. Ultimately, the search committee will do its due diligence. There'll be informal reference checking at the beginning and more detailed reference checking at the end. You cannot reference check enough. You want to make sure that you get a good sense of who people are, what kind of person they are, what examples they can offer of the achievements that they have made, and ask them to be specific. Speak to people who know them and speak to people who could talk to you about how effective they may be for Boston. And then finally, candidates are usually invited to come, meet the community, and interview with the school committee as a body once they've been screened as finalists from the search process. Here's where the, the community really gets to play a more active role. Generally, there are ample opportunities for candidates to come in, meet the different constituencies, spend a day or two in the city. I don't know what your practice has been in the past, but just take an opportunity to let people talk to them, see who they are, pose questions, raise concerns, and then the school committee can conduct an extensive and diligent public interview and make its decisions from there. And when the school committee does make a decision, the decision should be to begin negotiations with a candidate subject to the successful negotiation of a mutually agreeable contract of employment. That's sort of the, the, the whole extent of what a superintendent's search is. I'm sure that there'll be no shortage of consulting firms that will want to assist you, and they will be able to talk to you about how diligently they will pursue the candidates for you. But, you know, you, this is Boston. It's a marquee city in the United States. It is very well known as a center for education, and you have no reason to expect anything less than some of the best potential superintendents in the country to want to come.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kucher. Are there any questions from the committee before we move on? Dr. Alkins?
Yes, just a general sense. Given that you've sort of suggested that this is going to be somewhat of an expedited process, do you recommend, like, where do you think that we sort of shorten certain? I've sort of enumerated a list of your, of your points. Which of these phases do you suggest we expedite perhaps more than others? Like the, the search, the community feedback portion? What are you suggesting?
Many of these steps can overlap. While you're accepting applications, you can be continuing to get feedback because the feedback that you'll get will inform the search committee's interviews and the search committee's review of the candidates. So some of that can overlap. The other thing that, that you can use to expedite the search process is this. No one in the country is more than two degrees of separation away from the Boston Public Schools if they're in the field of education. Everybody knows somebody who knows somebody. The word of your vacancy will be out and everyone will know Boston is looking. The superintendent applicant, the superintendent applicant lot is a procrastinating lot. You're likely to get 80% of your applications in the final week. So if you have six weeks of public posting, your application of public posting, your applications are going to come in in week six. If you have four weeks, your application is going to come in in week three or week four. So you could shorten the time that you keep the position open. Because I honestly don't think that will affect the number of candidates. It will just get people to move a little faster than they normally would. And then the search committee itself can move swiftly. One of the advantages of a smaller rather than a larger search committee is that there are fewer schedules to reconcile. If you've got a twenty-five-member search committee, that's going to take you two months to get everybody together on the same number of dates. If it's a shorter search committee, you can get that work done more quickly. And as long as the public gets to have a good look at the finalist candidates, the public, in my experience, has been willing to trust the process. And that can happen when you're ready to move to the school committee where everything has to be in public. Once the search committee is done, the search process has to be public. And that's the open meeting law. That's not my opinion. That's just the way it is.
And as a follow-up sort of to that, do you have any sense from superintendents or past superintendents as to their thoughts on the process and how we can improve the process?
Well, the state could help us improve the process if they gave the school committee more discretion to be more actively involved earlier in the process than later. A majority of the school committee may not serve on the search committee if you're going to use the executive session. I don't think that was the intent of the legislature, but it is. It's been the way the attorneys general of Massachusetts have applied the law for a couple of decades now. So if I were in control of these things, which I'm not, I'd give the school committee more time to do its due diligence with the preliminary candidates as well as with the finalist candidates. This is a very important decision and you don't want to make it on the basis of one encounter for seventy-five minutes or so. I'd also recommend that the interviews be as long as necessary and as diligent as possible. There are people out there who are very good at answering questions, who may not be as good applying their skills to the superintendency. And that's why a skilled search committee that asks the right insightful questions can get some of that information out.
Thank you. Other questions? Comments? Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
You may have said this and I apologize. One, thank you for sharing this information. What is the right size given for a search committee? And I'm even curious what your suggestion would be given the timeline that you understand is our goal.
What I've said to everybody that I've ever done this with is, the fewer the people, the more expeditious and efficient the initial screening and interview process can be. When you get to the public sector, it's very important to have more people given an opportunity to meet the candidates. And then the school committee can also have a public interview. Many of the school committees have asked members of the public to submit what they think are very good questions to post to the candidates. So that's my thought on the more, the smaller the search committee, the easier it is to manage. And I know that that can be disappointing because everybody wants to be involved in the process. But I've also been involved in search committees that were just so large, you know, thirteen, fifteen, seventeen people that they just can't get the work done efficiently in order to get a superintendent on board in two or three months or four months. That doesn't mean you compromise on the quality of your recruiting or the abilities of your candidates. That's not affected.
Here or there, you know, and you know this, but there's been sort of debate about the use of a search firm. Can you share sort of any thoughts and pros and cons around that process?
Well, there are districts that have thrown an awful lot of money at search consultants who are going to find you, many of the candidates that will find you anyway. But there are some, there's some organizations out there that have historically done very good work working with national searches for big cities. And they're pretty well-known and I'm sure that your offices will be able to identify them and present them to you.
Have you also seen organizations our size, school districts our size, moving at this speed, not using a search firm?
I can't say I have. I can tell you, though, that a lot of smaller districts do a very good job recruiting their own candidates and not paying money to get a search done. But a city the size of Boston with all of the issues and all of the constituents and all of the interests from around the country will generate candidates that you're going to need to take some time to vet. And for that, a professional firm can be more helpful.
Thank you.
Dr. Alkins?
Thank you again, actually following up on that. In your experience, have you seen more superintendents that have come out of search firm announcements or those that have come from, say, community organization recommendations or from other constituency groups?
I think more of the better candidates come from networking done by the district, the district leaders, and the friends of the district. And by that, I mean your critical friends at the colleges and universities, people that you know, Council of Great City Schools. There, you need them in your corner and they will be very effective for you when you have them anyway. I would be very surprised if there are people who come to you who would not have come to you anyway. Although, search consultants can be helpful in guiding them, encouraging them, being the liaison between the candidates and the school district. Remember this. This is a school district. School districts everywhere are the best rumor mills that you can imagine. So there's going to be a rumor that this is, this search is, and it always is in any district, this search is already decided for an internal candidate. Or this search is already decided for anybody but an internal candidate. Or certain somebody so-and-so has the mystery candidate from San Francisco who's packed and ready to go. These rumors get started, they have no basis in fact. But a search consultant can be very good at holding hands with the candidates and and helping to make sure that they get the right information and that you get the right information and that the referencing is done efficiently. But you will also need to do your own due diligence and double-check most things.
Thank you. Are there any other questions before we move on? Ms. LaPera? Ms. LaPera? No. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Kucha, profound thanks for speaking with us tonight. For folks who don't know, the Mass Association School Committees does, of which you're the executive director, does an excellent job of representing literally every school committee in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So your willingness to come speak with us tonight, I'm so glad the chair called you and talked to us. And I know you would probably be at, you know, if you're at Boston tonight, you're probably at Bolton tomorrow and Boxborough the following night. You represent all the cities and towns in Massachusetts very well. And quite frankly, you are a national leader among executive directors of state associations. So your reputation nationally is incredibly strong. And for my fellow members, Mr. Kucha is literally the best expert on mass open meeting law as it applies to school committees, the attorneys generals, offices. Often will call him for interpretation. So the guidance you have given us over the years has been incredible and thank you for tonight. I obviously have a bit of a national perspective in my role with the Council of Great City Schools. And so I want to reiterate some of the points you've made. And in the seventy-six member districts in the Council of Great City Schools, which represents the largest big city schools and the big city school districts in the country, right now, there are currently eighteen openings for superintendents. So eighteen out of seventy-six is approximately twenty-five percent. That is compared to the historical average at this time of year of less than ten percent. So almost a quarter of the large city districts, the superintendents have notified that they are leaving or that the board is making a change. And it is obviously for a combination of reasons, but we cannot underscore the challenge of being a superintendent right now. And as they have come through COVID, the work that the superintendents have done, including our superintendent, has been incredible and the pressures that they have faced. And, you know, we talk about the great resignation going on, the great retirement going on nationally. This is happening with school boards, it's happening with school board members, yes, it's happening with superintendents. It's also happening, you've seen in Boston, just in the past week, a number of presidents' universities, MIT, Tufts, et cetera. Education, like other fields, is a very, very tough field. I agree with, and by the way, of those eighteen openings right now, eight of the districts do not have interims and do not have a search going right now for various reasons. But there's still a large, very large number of searches going on. And Mr. Cardet Hernandez, I believe everyone that I'm aware of is using a search firm to conduct it for the complexities that Mr. Kucha talked about. The other pieces, I agree completely with what Mr. Kucha was saying, and that there's a lot to be attractive about Boston. Boston, we beat ourselves up here, there's no question about that. And we're tough on ourselves and we demand excellence and we demand improvement. Boston still has an excellent reputation in the national education scene. People are interested in the possibilities here between the higher ed community, the the educational funding community, a lot of firsts here, the business community, the active involvement of a number of communities that Mr. Kucha referred to, such as our students with disabilities, our English language learning community, et cetera. People see a lot of possibility here. And quite frankly, a lot of people nationally are excited by the election of Meow Wu as well and will be attracted to that. We will have some challenges, though, because not only will people want to understand the change over the past couple of years and any potential change in governance structure as well. A lot of superintendents right now are either looking to leave the industry, as Mr. Kucha talked about, and move into academia or foundational work, that type of thing. Or conversely, they are saying, I can't leave my district right now. We're just coming out of the pandemic and I feel like I would be abandoning my district. So we will have both opportunity, but we will have challenges as well. And the work of all of us to reach out, find candidates that we think would be interesting and pass them on to the search committee and ultimately to the search firm to talk to folks and engage their interest in a coordinated way will be helpful. I agree completely with what you said, Mr. Kucha, about the need for us to do finding on that. I'm not sure what the stats are in Massachusetts right now as far as the number of openings. Are you aware of that, Mr. Kucha?
I'm going to guess right now that we're probably aware of about twenty-five districts that will have a different person in the superintendent's office at the end of the year. But it's still early in the retirement announcement season, so.
Yeah. And I agree with you, and I will be respectful of time, Chair Robinson. I just want to point out, if I heard you correct, Mr. Kucha, there are a couple of points that are important points for school committee members to be aware of. So one is to ultimately approve the search committee that the chair recommends because in Boston, the chair recommends makeup of committees, but the school committee has to vote on it. So we would be voting on the makeup of the search committee. We would be voting on the recommended that the search, the search committee would recommend the choosing of a search firm and the school committee would vote that. We would do a community process to listen, we would vote on a job description. And then ultimately, we would be in charge of the public process, including interviewing ourselves and making a decision. So those, I believe, I just want to make sure we're in agreement on what you laid out as key involvement of school committee members.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Kucha.
Again, thank you, Mr. Kucha, for joining us this evening and we'll make sure that, oops, excuse me. Dr. Alkins, you have another question? Oh, I'm... Oh, Mr. Cardet Hernandez, excuse me.
Maybe this, thank you for this and thank you, Mr. O'Neill, as well. I think sort of two things, just quick thoughts. One is, you know, I'm in agreement with you. I don't think there's any way we could do this without a search committee. But I want to always pose the questions that I think are, that are existing outside of this space and just make sure we bring that in and we give it, we give it an opportunity for dialogue. And then two, I'm curious, and this might become clearer as we move through the process. But I'm hearing you say it's about the, we're voting on makeup, community process. And then my understanding is the sort of the sum total of the contract, including those contract details, correct?
The contracting process is done by the school committee. Obviously, in close consultation with your legal counsel.
Yep. And so I think I'm in full agreement with Mr. O'Neill. Like, I think while this is a challenging time for urban system, school systems across the country, and I think the number of open positions, you know, it allows us sort of eyes wide open to understand the competition that we have in a search process as well as, while there is like Boston exceptionalism, that there are challenges that are just not unique to us, but that are really national challenges that we are also part of. And at the same time, it's a great place to live. I just moved my family here, right? So like, this is an incredible city to be in. This is an incredible opportunity for someone to come lead with us. And while there are real questions around the governance structure around this committee, I think there's also opportunity there to be part of sort of a new way of thinking about how school governance happens here. And so, and I think all of us probably independently have already started, have experienced our own phone ringing around folks who are interested or curious about this opportunity. And I'm excited for more folks to come forward with that. And then at the same time, I'm going to say this, and everyone on the panel knows, on the committee knows this is where my head is. I want us to be mindful as we go through the search around sort of where we've been and ways to continue to make this a compelling job, but one that's also sustainable for folks so we can continue to keep talent for a long period of time, which allows for real transformative change for our system and for our kids and for our families. And I just want to name that sort of going into it. This is like a tough moment for a lot of folks who are watching what we're doing and what the decisions that we're making and the process that we're going to go through. And I think that commitment is just important. For me to name, just because I'm our newest member to the school committee.
Thank you. Are there any last comments before we move on? Again, I want to thank you, Mr. Kucha, for joining us this evening. And we'll make sure that all members have your contact information. We will be sharing, if we haven't already, the materials that you have sent. And I'm sure as this process moves along, we may be asking you back again. So thank you.
Delighted to do so. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. We look forward to engaging the public in the conversation about the qualifications of our next superintendent. And we agree with the mayor that we need to move quickly and should look with someone who is educational leadership and is familiar with the city of Boston or the Boston Public Schools. Traditionally, this process has taken much longer than five months, but we've reviewed what happened in the past and what is required while recognizing a sense of urgency in the present. Our kids cannot wait. And I know we can identify the best candidate while incorporating community voice. Identifying someone who knows and understands the district and our community is going to be important as a next step, given we are working on this expedited timeline. There's also urgency to this process because there are many large districts referred tonight that are currently searching for a superintendent. We know that there are at least eighteen vacancies among the seventy-six largest urban districts and that several factors will be in consideration for high-quality candidates. We also know that Boston is widely regarded as a place where a lot can be accomplished and there's a lot of interest nationally. As Mr. O'Neil said, in the leadership of Mayor Wu and the work on this committee. And we know from examples set by Dr. Superintendent Cassilius that the higher education, business, nonprofit and philanthropic communities in Boston are ready to continue stepping up to support our students and staff as two partners in the work. We will hold a special school committee meeting on March second that will focus on beginning the superintendent search process. At that meeting, we will identify the search committee, which will be made up of community members that are, that representing, for example, but not limited to students, families, BTU, school leaders, members of the school committee and our task forces. The school committee will vote on the membership of the search committee. And again, remember that we want to keep it small and focused. We will also announce at the March second meeting, the beginning of the community meetings that will, we will host to seek input from the community on what we want in our next superintendent. Based on requests for qualifications utilized in the 2014 and 2018 search processes, BPS will draft an RFP to invite proposals for a superintendent search firm. School committee will then vote on the selection of a search firm. I want to really be clear about our roles here. We all have a job to do if we're going to do this in an expedited way. The community will support the process by sharing their input with us. We will host meetings and we will also provide space for community members to send us their ideas. Once we have final candidates, we will also seek the community's support and input in the public process, public interview process. The search committee is responsible for hosting community meetings that will lead them to drafting a job description. And once we begin receiving applications, they will review resumes and interview candidates, ultimately narrowing the candidate pool to a few finalists for recommendation. The school committee will attend community listening sessions, vote to approve the job description and selection of the search firm, participate in the final interview process with the final candidates and ultimately vote on the selection of the next superintendent. We are at the beginning stages of this work and we will get there together. We thank you all and the committee looks forward to holding regular updates on the search process. So before we end, are there any final questions? Hearing none, we'll now move on to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers for public comments on reports.
Thank you. Is there new, any new business?
Just have one thing. Just in the sense of making sure that we're always following up on some of the things that we, we do hear. You know, just for example, hearing in the public testimony about sort of the current plans for BDEA. Is there any way that we can receive some type of follow-up so that we know that they've received some communication around what the plans are for them next year? Just so that we're aware of this. And, you know, this might not be a question anyone can answer, but I just want to make sure that we are following up with these respective school communities.
Yes, we will make sure that happens. Thank you. Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
I, I sort of was alluding to this question in earlier in the evening, but I am still curious and I want to make sure it makes its way into this conversation. But around the graduation data, there was not just a question about the sort of the future structure, but if there was any sort of internal measures we were going to put in place. And also our own analysis of our data that would allow us to sort of go back to communities and share that the, the data we once presented is, remains accurate. And I just want to push that that continues to be a conversation that we're holding here.
Yes, again, we will follow up with that. Unfortunately, the superintendent is not back in the meeting, but we will make sure that that information is addressed. It'll be in the minute, so we'll make sure.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Hearing none, that concludes our business for this evening. The school committee will hold a remote fiscal year twenty-three budget hearing on Tuesday, March first at five PM. And the school committee will host a special remote meeting on Wednesday, March second at five PM. At that time, the committee will discuss and vote on the superintendent's separation agreement, the makeup of the superintendent's search committee and the RFP RFQ for superintendent's search firm. If there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LaPera?
Yes, good evening.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes, one of us not to.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, thank you all.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. Good night.